The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number one, nomination and appointment of an eligible person to fill the council vacancy in Ward Three. I'll entertain a motion to accept or reject the nomination from the Ward Three Candidate Selection Committee.
Motion?
This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Remarks should be directed to council only. Does anyone wish to speak on this item?
Steve Ellis, Ward Four. The only thing I'm gonna say about this, this item right now is basically that, you know, I'm glad that Ward Three, you know, people who live there get a chance to have their say, but I do wish it were the case that they'd been able to come up with unanimous decision on who they would go for. I understood that that was the expectation of the charge, and it doesn't sound like there was a lot of push to try to find a unanimous candidate. Now, maybe it's impossible, but what I understand from people who were there, I was not, is that there, there wasn't an attempt to find any sort of compromise candidate, which I think does a little bit of a disservice to the voters of Ward Three. You know, we saw what they were interested in during the last election, and even though their council member couldn't continue on in her seat, I think it's important that there be some continuity in the kind of person who gets elected, and I would hope that the committee that was appointed would attempt to provide that kind of continuity, and it's unclear whether or not that was the case. So maybe we'll hear a little more discussion about it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Paul Arcaroli, Ward Three. First of all, I'd say in the last eight years, I probably, I have knocked more doors in Ward Three than probably anybody in this room. I would even be willing to wager that. So over the last eight years, I got to know my neighbors very, very well, and I consider myself an activist, Ward Three member, concerned about the welfare of that ward, as well as the city at large. And certainly, I've actually knocked every ward in this city in the last eight years. Not because I have a financial interest or political interest, but because I have a community interest. So I actually was at the committee, the committee's evaluation, and I actually did hear every one of the candidates. I actually recorded every one of them. I recorded everything, and I turned everything into transcripts. So I really got to see, hear, and then review later the, each one of the candidates. So I sat in on the interviews, and the thing that disturbed me is that I don't think we have a person, I have nothing against the person that is the top candidate. I have to say that right now, is that, but I always thought that the process was to replace, to find somebody that closely matched the wishes of the ward from the previous election. That is, not to flip a vote, not to change a vote, not to change a political orientation, not to go from liberal to conservative. Unfortunately, I heard some of the conversations from some of the, some from an individual that was there charged, that they felt they needed to make change to the city council. So I wasn't really happy with the way that worked out, and I think that there is a candidate, at least one, that closely matches what we had before, and yet that, and that was kind of the source of the division. We had a three-two vote. So, and, and yes, as Dr. Ellis says, there wasn't a whole lot of time dedicated to kind of sorting out that difference, and it really was, let's make the vote and then send it forward to city council. And again, I had the impression that unanimous vote was required, and yet that didn't happen, and then much, much regret. So, I have to say that I don't think that the process worked correctly. I don't think it worked at all, and I think I would prefer, as an active member of Ward Three, to leave that seat open. Because then one thing I hear here is that, oh, there's only eight more meetings. Well, if it's only eight more meetings, it won't matter if the seat is open or not, and that I would rather get out back and knock doors for the next Ward Three candidate, and rather that each one is vetted properly through that process, and not in a one-shot, thirty-minute meeting with an evaluation that is questionable in my mind. Anyway, I appreciate every, I know it's not easy. This process is not, is inexact, but I think the answer here is really to leave the seat open until the, the next election cycle. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Okay, so I'm Stacy Bruce, and I actually served on the selection committee, and I just wanted to give you just a little bit of a background. Obviously, you guys know the resolution itself doesn't call for a unanimous vote. We were given the instructions of what we were told to do. We had to ask every candidate the exact same questions. We had to interview all the candidates on the same night, and we had to make a decision at that same time. So those are basically the parameters. I think that's Resolution 2122139. So I, I just will tell you how I came to my decision. As a committee, when we met before, a couple of weeks before the candidates, it was very important to all of us that the candidate we selected had an intent to run in February. And first thing is, is candidate Bruce clearly stated he intended to run. Candidate Hall said she would run if the ward asks her to. Another candidate, Howard, did not intend to run in February, and then the two others, Chambers and Beatty, intended to run. Understanding of key ward issues in Ward Three and city issues, Mr. Bruce said safety and security, TIF four and five, stormwater, budget pressures, OTA, turnpike issues, and homelessness. Ms. Hall spoke a little bit about water quality, but was more broadly speaking about community building. Didn't really identify very many policy areas. Other candidates spoke on OTA, TIF, homelessness, Bob Moore Farms. As far as the time commitment goes, that was something that we asked. Mr. Bruce said, "I'm a retired," quote unquote, "I'm a retired military guy. I've got twenty-four seven, three sixty-five." Others weren't sure on the time commitment. Level of engagement with council meetings, one of the candidate, one of the selection committee members, Mr. Carter, he had asked a question of how many council meetings have you attended or watched online in the last ten months? Mr. Bruce had attended one meeting and watched five. Heather said none, because she hosts a book club on Tuesdays. Howard said a few. Chambers said four online, one in person, and Beatty said fifteen to twenty online. There was a lightning round of issues, questions that were asked about Bob Moore Farms, turnpikes, UMP TIF, and an audit issue, and I can go through those. Mr. Bruce said yes to Bob Moore Farms, yes to turnpike ramps, yes to a public vote to TIF, and then he needed more information on the audit. Heather was not familiar with Bob Moore Farms. She opposed turnpike ramps, yes to TIF going to a vote, and yes to an audit. And then when we looked at, we were provided voter participation. I know the council has had that concern with other candidates that have been brought forth, and Mr. Bruce has voted eighteen times since 2020, Ms. Hall fourteen times, Howard ten, Chambers twelve, and Beatty four. So when comparing intent to run, understanding of current issues, time availability, familiarity with policy questions, and voter participation, Robert Bruce, in my opinion, was the strongest overall candidate. More so, a unanimous vote was never a requirement of this process. The City of Norman's own resolution governing this appointment directs the committee to conduct interviews, deliberate, and forward a nominee for council consideration. It does not state, imply, or require that we have to have a unanimous vote. Our three-two vote reflects exactly what the resolution anticipates, a thoughtful discussion among people with differing perspectives resulting in a majority decision. A split vote is not a flaw or a sign of dysfunction. It is simply evidence that committee members weighed qualifications differently. The committee fulfilled its obligation fully and appropriately within the process laid out by the city.
Thank you. If you'd like to speak on this item, please come up to the podium.
Hello, I'm Daryl Janaway. I'm one of the director of the HOA, Timbridge HOA, west part of Norman. I've known Mr. Bruce for about close to twenty-five years. I've worked with him almost on a daily basis for probably fifteen years, working with different issues in our neighborhood, as well as working on everything you could possibly work on in a neighborhood, and that's anywhere from sprinklers to barking dogs to, you name it, whatever happens in a neighborhood. And we included in that working with the city on street issues, creek issues, anything that involves the engineering department and the street department, let's say. I think in a situation like this that you need to know something about the person. He's not a belligerent person. He's very, let's see, professional and analytical. We've worked with, our neighborhood has more than four hundred houses and houses, and let's see, probably more than a thousand people out there. And so when you work with that many people on the issues that they have with an HOA or with the city, things can get contentious. But Robert has never wanted to fight somebody or shoot somebody, or whatever the case may be. I'm telling you that he is not a belligerent type person. I know he's an educated person, and his entire family is a great family. He's got three sons, all are very good people. And let me tell you something, we're getting a, we're getting an excellent person to fill this position. And I feel like I can provide any kind of information if anybody has as far as his character, but he's a good person. And I think you'd, you know, you have him on here, and you'll be satisfied. Thank you now.
Thank you.
Jerry Kirby, Ward Five. I wasn't gonna say anything on this matter until I heard her speaking, and did you say he was in favor of turnpike ramps? Because if so, all of us that it's going to affect, and people that already might lose their land to eminent domain or end up with a turnpike right on their front porch, might not be in support of turnpike ramp. So my question would be, has he actually went around and talked to everybody that's in the path of that monster and asked them how they felt about the on-ramps that he is in favor of? Because, I mean, he's being elected to represent the people, not his personal opinion. So if his personal opinion's gonna override the right to make sure people get served properly, then I would ask for Brandon, my member, to say no. That'd be all.
Thank you.
Robert Casper, Ward Three. I was the chair of this committee. I think we can ask Mr. Bruce about the turnpike authority, but my understanding was he was against the access rules. The question was about, should the city maintain, if there's any access rules, should we maintain it? And we already know that the county is doing that, so it's kind of a moot point, even if he was for it. So, but he's right here, we can ask him to clarify that point. Stacy did a fantastic job of kind of summarizing everything up, but I just wanted, as the chair, I probably should have pushed harder to get a unanimous vote, but as some of you know, when you come in here, you're not gonna get a unanimous vote on an issue. The makeup of the committee was not such that we were gonna get a unanimous vote, which is good. I mean, that means we had a well-rounded committee from all sides in the middle, and like this, and some of the issues that were important to some members were not important to others. You had, it's a kind of unique makeup. I mean, you had three members on the committee that had run for Ward Three and, and not won. So what they think is important has been rejected by Ward Three in the past. To be honest with you, I mean, I voted, I voted for Ms. Montoya. And it wasn't for, because of policy, because I don't want, I don't know what her policies were, to be honest with you. I don't see her up here advocating for anything in particular. I thought she was a very reasonable person and would look at stuff, and so I looked at that as somebody who would take the issue and look at it to determine the best thing to do. I didn't agree with some of her votes, but I did appreciate the way she, her processes she went to doing that. Mr. Bruce is, when he interviewed, his process for how he would approach issues was very, very analytical. It was kind of prove me wrong, prove me right, bring the facts, and I won't come in here with any prejudiced opinion. So I appreciate that. I think that's what we need. I think having this seat go vacant is, is absolutely not an option. Because if all four of these people run in February, as they indicated, we'll probably have a runoff, which means April. And to have my ward unrepresented for six months is unacceptable. That's not an option. So I would encourage you to take this recommendation of the committee, put Mr. Bruce in here, and if he does a, a bad job, he'll get voted on in February. By meantime, I think that is somebody that can represent the ward during the interim, and that's what this is, is interim position. And so unless there was something that's disqualifying, I would, you know, ask you to, you know, I mean, the mayor hand-selected the committee, so there's people that he trusted to give him advice and to give you guys advice. That's what we came up with. It was, now I would say, just a little bit of the process, since we had five candidates, I asked that we narrow it down to two. So we had everybody vote on who are your two to go forward. And Mr. Chambers and Mr. Bruce were the three, or the two that went forward. So after that, we had, okay, now we got that, let's revote. And that's when it came a three-two. And so the, the two people that voted against him, really, I mean, should be voting for Mr. Chambers. So Ms. Hall was not a finalist. So didn't make it out the first round. So as you can see, there was just different opinions, and I liked Ms. Hall. I had no problem with her. I think if she ran, you know, let her do the forums and run. But I will also say, I think if Mr. Bruce would have run last time, he would have won. I think if he had a chance to do some forums and talk to people in Ward Three, I think they would, would welcome him. I agree with Mr. Janaway. He seemed to me like to be a problem solver. Didn't seem to be a far-right guy, a far-left guy. It's a nonpartisan seat. I think if you get Mr. Bruce in here, I think you're gonna have somebody that you can work with, be reasonable, and I think that's what we want in Ward Three. But the option of letting it be vacant for six months, would any of you guys like your ward to be unrepresented for six months? I mean, if so, go ahead and step down. And nobody would do that, because that's, and plus, you're gonna have eight people for six months, potentially. So how many, four, four votes are we gonna have here? I mean, I want my ward represented, and I have, after looking at it, I have no reason to think that Mr. Bruce would not fairly represent the ward. And so I would ask you to follow the process that you set up. If you really want the, whoever follows the council member, then in the ordinance, you would have said, let that council member choose who my replacement is. And when I was on council, that was, that was the issue. Mr. Azell resigned and asked me to take over. Well, at that time, councils said, no, we're not doing that, you know? And that was before you guys came up with your ordinance, and that's when the selection committee. So councils already rejected the idea of having a council member pick their replacement. So as far as going forward with somebody's policies, whoever, you never know how many people vote. I mean, I can say that some of you got elected because they voted against the other person. Some of you, well them to get them. Some of them, you know, how people vote, it's hard to narrow down why they vote that way. Again, I voted for Ms. Montoya, because I know her. I didn't know the other candidate. I thought she was reasonable, but I may not necessarily agree with her policies. And so I think, you know, why you vote, I said, why I didn't vote for her, because I wanted to continue her policies. You know, so I think that's, my biggest issue is having this, our ward unrepresented for six months is not, is not, not acceptable. So just for, I just want to ask you, if you had any questions about the means and the process, I was here to, to field any questions about that. I think Ms. Bruce did a fantastic job of kind of summarizing what the comments were, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Justin.
I, Shelley, Ward Three. I know personally Robert Castleberry, Allison Patron, and Bruce Stacey. I appreciate all three of their serving on the committee, and I have been a ward member in that area for twenty-three years. I would really appreciate making a decision because whether it's six or eight weeks, or six months, our ward has seen a lot of -- or six months, our ward has seen a lot of inactivity and we could use representation. And Bree was a great person and she had just started getting active in our ward. And to have no one, whether again, it's two months or six months, please don't do this to us. We would like to have an opportunity to have Mr. Bruce in there and try. And if we don't like him, we'll let him out. Just, just let him try. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from anybody that hasn't spoken about the Ward three selection?
Lucipulvani, Ward four. I'm glad that the AHA president pointed out that our selected person would not shoot anyone for his agreement. That's very, very reassuring. The president of the commission just spoke and he was not, he wasn't even entirely sure about the process. He was, ah, I should have pushed more. That doesn't make me feel very, very confident about their choice. And what I want to say is, I don't, there is nothing to do with the people, but in the commission and the person was chose to represent Ward three, I think it was a bad process. Because we choose a person, what the commission was tasked to choose a person to fill a seat, not to choose a person to represent what people voted for. So I can understand how everyone wants representation, everyone wants someone to represent their ward. But I think that in this case, we choose someone to fill a seat rather than someone to continue the mandates that the people gave. So I would turn it down and try with different process, different commission, I don't know. Maybe quickly, surely quickly. But I don't think this is the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Mary Hamburg, I'm Ward three member. And I just want to say that Heather Hall ran because of the Ward three push. There was many of us in our community that wanted representation of our community and we pushed her to run because we feel like she represents us. So the fact that maybe she wasn't as familiar with every topic that's in the ward, she's a small business owner, she's been in Norman for years, she has kids in the school system. We've lived next to her for years, we've seen how active she is in the community. It may not be with every discussion that she was asked about in the committee meeting, but she is present in other ways in the community that I think is important. So I think she'd be a voice for Ward three, and I would really like for her to be our representative. And if it's close, I think it should be looked at again, so that we can re-figure, if there are two candidates that are really close, we should re-look at that and consider them both. Thank you.
Thank you.
Warr, four, I'm not a candidate in Ward three. However, we've already done this selection process, so I think that if we do anything now, it would look bad on all of our selection candidates from before, and we should just continue to move forward. Any decision you make is probably not going to be one that makes the city happy. We had five people interviewed, that's five chances. We'll vote again, there'll be somebody running, I'm sure, and if not, we'll figure that out when it comes. You can only do your best right now, and we at least need all of your seats filled. That's all you owe us as a city, at least, at the very minimum, is at least just fill the seats. So pick a person, go with it, December, a new person will announce. We'll move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Raven Connell, Ward eight. I don't live in Ward three, but I do know Heather Hall. I attend, the book clubs often are on Tuesdays, so I do know that even if Heather hasn't directly watched city council meetings, that we do talk about issues that affect the local community as well as national community, that she also listens to us and hears concerns that we have. I feel very listened to as a person, which I don't always feel in this community, so I really appreciate spaces that are made to feel safe. I also wanted to say that, given the whole belligerent thing, I don't think she's belligerent as well, I don't think she'd be shooting guns. Just, since someone else pointed out about another candidate, thought I would say that about Heather, that also don't think she'd do that, if that is another point in her favor. So, yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Miami Windler, Ward two. Okay, Ward two, we've been through this. We outright rejected the one guy because, like, he hadn't voted at all. We need, as a city, to get better at this, because this keeps happening. So people who run really need to, you know, serve their terms. That would be a nice thing, so we don't have to deal with selection committees and finding somebody new for a couple of months. So please do better.
Thank you.
Chokma, hello. My name is Heather Hall. I did not intend to come here and speak, I did not ask anyone to speak. I wanted to say that I volunteered in spite of the fact that I both own, both, I own a business downtown at which I am working more than sixty hours a week. I serve on the board of directors for Norman Cultural Connection, and I serve as an officer on the board of directors for Mountains and Plains Independent Booksellers Association. My plate, she is full, but my community asked me to volunteer for this position as a result of the fact that we have had, we have had some spectacular representation in Ward three, but we have also had spectacularly bad, national news-worthy representation. And I was terrified that we would wind up with someone who volunteered, you're left with whoever volunteers. If I didn't volunteer, that's the level of personal responsibility that I felt. I was very frank in the meeting that I have a lot on my plate, all of that in addition to two teenagers who attend Norman High School. All I wanted to say when I come up here was to say, thank you for doing everything that you're doing, to thank the committee for the work that they put in, and to encourage everyone in this room to remember, please, that there is far more that binds us than divides us. What I want moving forward is what's best for this community. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else that would like to speak on this that has not?
Cardlinda Gravel, Ward four. I would just like to say that we're always going to be divided. There's always going to be two or more sides to every issue. So that's what's here, and that's what's going to continue to be involved in our city government on every level. So I do agree that if we have someone that meets past the fifty percent line and they've been suggested, that if we go back and do it again, just because there was a unanimous vote there, I, my understanding is it wasn't requirement. So if we do require an unanimous every time and we don't get it, how many months is that going to drag this out? How long is that going to drag it out? If we, if we have goals that we are trying to set for this, and then we have issues with who's willing to do it, who's willing to commit to it, maybe if we do it again, the people who were willing have moved on to doing other things that aren't available anymore. So I do think we should take this, take care of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Final comments from council, comments or questions for any of the committee members, anybody else? Councilor Peacock?
Thank you. I just really want to say, thank you to the five people that did put their name in the hat for this. I know it takes a lot to put yourself out there, win or lose, you all have my respect, because you just were willing to at least show that you have a level of commitment and you care for your community, and so just very much want to put that out there. Having said that, I absolutely support and trust the process laid out by Mayor Holman. I trust and support the committee that he handpicked and put together, and I feel that they came to, while most, some people might not agree this was the right result, I think they came to a result that we can all live with and move forward. And as has been said, if the voters of Ward three are not satisfied with that result, they have the option to undo it in February, and I give everybody, you know, all the runway and all the opportunity to sell themselves and to show what they can do and, you know, make their community proud. So, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions from council? Councilmember Blodgett?
Yes. Are we allowed to ask Mr. Bruce, like, his views on the turnpike?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Bruce, do you mind taking the podium? Thank you. Good evening to you, first of all, and thank you also for putting your name in the hat. I do appreciate that.
My pleasure, but before I get started, I'd like to say thank you for those individuals that actually took the time to read the resume, to research my background, understand my motives for putting in my name for the position, and understand that, hey, I just graduated from the Citizen Academy. And during that process, I said, hey, I have the time, I can do this. I have forty years of government experience at the federal level. I was a military officer for twenty-three, a civilian for almost seventeen. I said, I can use my skills and my talents in filling that position, whether it be for a few months or for a few years, I can do this. Now, as far as knowing all the details behind all the issues and projects, I wish I knew them all. I can promise you this, before I make a decision, I'll sit back and get those that have been involved far longer than I have and see their frame of reference, and try to come up with a logical decision on whether, whatever problem or whatever, whatever question I'm being asked to vote on.
Okay, and I deeply appreciate that. And I, I mean, I can say, when I was elected, I didn't know all the issues as well, so it's definitely been a learning process for me as well, so I appreciate that. But the turnpike issue is a huge issue in Norman, and that affects a lot of people that I care deeply about. And it's not my ward, so I could easily be like, oh, I don't know, you know, I'll let Ward five deal with that. But it's very important, so I would love to hear what you, what your thinking is on the turnpike issue.
In what respect? In what respect? I, I, you know? If you're asking if it's a good or bad idea, I think the time to be engaged in that was is, was far earlier than we have been engaged in. I mean, four years, five years, partnership with the state, ODA, this is going to work or this is not going to work in this particular location. I don't know the history behind that, but I assume that, that, that partnership is not as strong as it should have been.
Any, oh, did you, yeah, please.
Okay, thank you very much for your answer. Like I said, this is nothing personal at all against you, I don't know you personally, but the turnpike is, it matters a lot to me, and I, and I just, from hearing from the people that were there witnessing it and the interviews and everything, and even recorded it and everything, and just knowing that's...
I think the question I understood to be, turnpikes and exits off the turnpike.
Yes.
Exchanges off the turnpike.
Right, now...
Now, I think my response was something like, that was important for the city to work with the, with the turnpike authority as far as, like, what makes sense for an exit ramp or non-ramp? What makes sense based upon traffic?
Right. Now, I'm just, I'm referring to just kind of the process. And in hearing those videos, hearing that someone was, that was on a committee member, just making it clear that her intent was just to flip a seat, just really disheartens me and makes it hard for me to approve of this because of the process, nothing to do with you. I just, I just think, I trust the process and I trust Mayor Holman. I just think it's unfortunate that someone on the committee, one or two members on the committee, were just making comments about flipping a seat. And I think, and I've had Ward three constituents, I'm not Ward three, but they have been emailing me like crazy today, asking me to not approve, saying that they want someone that is more aligned with who they had. And so, so I just felt compelled to speak up for all those people that emailed me today.
I'm a little uncertain what you mean by flipping a seat for an apolitical position. I, I don't, can you elaborate on that?
Right, and that's how I felt about it too, so thank you for that, I appreciate that, because those words should have never been said in that process. It's not about that. It's about getting someone in there that represents all of Ward three and all of Norman, no matter what, no matter what letter is beside their name.
I think in any ward, you're going to find that you'll have a far to the left and a far right on any subject. I think the ideal situation would be to find that golden mean that makes sense.
And I agree with that, and thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, any final comments, questions from council? So, over the years, I've been through multiple of these processes. I've seen two council members get appointed by having their name drawn out of a basket because it was left up to the council to decide, and there's only eight votes, and both times it ended up being four to four between two different candidates. And the tiebreaker for that is drawing a name out of a basket. That's how Robert Castleberry first got on, and that is how James Chapel served one year on council as Ward five council member, and then he lost reelection to Sarita Wilson the very next term. And then we've had multiple appointments, that's when we decided to go with a ward selection committee of residents. As was mentioned, the Ward two selection a few years ago, we had a council member who passed away suddenly, a little over a month after he was elect, or after he was sworn in. And we had a selection committee who picked somebody, they were divided, it was a three to two vote. The person they selected, after people started digging and found out that that person had not been voting in city elections, had not voted in the Ward two election that had just taken place, and the council at that time felt like that was a disqualifier to be on city council if you don't vote in city council elections. And in that case, we ended up bringing back former Ward two council member Joe Carter to serve for about four months until someone could get elected. Three times we've brought, or twice we've brought back a former council member to serve when there was nobody else available. And so I've been through this multiple times, through several different ways. We haven't seemed to have found a perfect way to do it yet, although the Ward five committee went very smoothly and did come back with the unanimous decision. In the end, I think we had five really great candidates that applied. I had seventeen people apply to be on the selection committee, five people applied to actually be on council. So a lot of people wanted to be the ones selecting, not as many wanting to sit in this chair. So I'm really thankful for all five people that put their name in there and are willing to do that, especially, you know, the spotlight that we've been in recently and the attention and wanting to be the next person that sits in that seat and joins us up here. All the candidates are people I know, I didn't know Mr. Bruce as much as I did the other four people personally, but they were all five people, after reading their resumes and talking to people, are people I would have trusted to sit on this council with us. With the selection committee, I figured two people that have been elected to Ward three and two people who have run for Ward three and received votes, even though they didn't win, and then a director of a local nonprofit who works on housing homeless teenagers, I felt like that was a pretty good committee makeup that was representative of Ward three and maybe a lofty goal to expect a unanimous decision, but it was a request, it is not a requirement. At no point did we lay out that if they did not... At no point did we lay out that if they did not come back with a unanimous decision that the council would reject the nomination. The council, we unanimously approved the selection committee. There was no objection to that. And so, the process has played out the way it has played out. And I have not heard a personal reason given for why Mr. Bruce should be disqualified for this nomination, like in the case in Ward Two where the candidate had not voted in city elections. I haven't heard any criticism of him as a person or a reason why he is not qualified to serve in this position. Again, I would like to have a unanimous decision when it comes to this, but that's not what we have. And I don't want to leave this seat open for potentially until April, when there could be a runoff. I hope that everybody that filed or that applied for the selection committee that was, that indicated they wanted to run will do so. And that anybody else out there that's thinking about it, I encourage you to do so as well. But given those circumstances, and I've heard the feedback, there are people in Ward Three that I very much trust, that I respect, and have given me their thoughts on this. And I've weighed those seriously and thoughtfully. And I think the best way to proceed forward right now for the best of our city is to make, is to approve this selection and let the Ward Three voters decide in February who they would like to continue representing them from that point on. And with that, I will, the motion on the floor is to accept the nomination. And councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to accept the nomination passes by a vote of seven to one, voting against Councilmember Blodgett.
Okay. Item number two, administering the oath of office to and seating of Councilmember-elect Robert Bruce, Ward Three. And I will recognize Judge Nichols to conduct the oath of office.
Mr. Bruce, if you raise your right hand, repeat your name. I'm Sage Malden.
I am Robert Bruce.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
I defend...
That was political. Do you defend?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
The Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And I will not knowingly receive...
I will not knowingly receive...
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear...
I further swear...
I will faithfully discharge my duties.
I faithfully discharge my duties.
As councilmember, to the best of my abilities, I will make up...
As councilmember, to the best of my abilities, I will make up.
Robert Bruce, I declare your duties sworn and seated as councilmember for Ward Three in City of Norman.
Okay. Proclamations. The proclamations will be voted on in one motion unless there is an objection by council. I entertain a, I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamations.
Motion?
The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamations. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been... And the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamations passes unanimously. The vote on the screen that says Bree Montoya obviously is Mr. Robert Bruce. That will be changed before the next meeting.
And Mark Flores and Sage Malden, join me up here at the podium. Okay. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of October 2025 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer History Month in the City of Norman. Whereas October is recognized nationally as LGBTQ+ History Month, a time to honor the histories, struggles, and contributions of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and other sexual and gender diverse individuals. And whereas in 1994, Rodney Wilson, a high school teacher in Missouri, became the first openly gay public teacher in the state and proposed the idea for a dedicated month to recognize LGBTQ+ history and to celebrate the often overlooked achievements and contributions across all areas of society. And whereas the month of October was chosen in part because it includes October 11th, which is National Coming Out Day, to commemorate the anniversary of the 1987 National March on Washington for Lesbian and Gay Rights. And whereas the City of Norman amended its civil rights ordinance on August 27, 2019 to include express protections against discrimination based on sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, and marital status, including marriage to the same, to a person of the same sex, to provide greater protections to all residents and to continue building a more inclusive community. And whereas the City of Norman is home to several local equality advocacy groups, including but not limited to Parents, Families, and Friends of Lesbians and Gays, PFLAG, Norman United, Norman Pride, and the Norman Queer Association, who support LGBTQ+ families and allies, educate the community about the unique issues and challenges facing the LGBTQ+ community, and advocate for changed attitudes and laws that achieve full equality for LGBTQ+ individuals. Now, therefore I, mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as LGBTQ+ History Month in the City of Norman and invite all citizens to join me in celebrating the diversity and character of our community, providing all citizens the right to human dignity, justice, and the opportunity to live life fully and achieve their aspirations. Pass and approve this, this 28th day of October 2025.
Dr. Sage Malden, just for the record. Thank you, Mayor Steven Tyler Holman, councilmembers, the Human Rights Commission, and members of our community. History isn't just what we inherit. It's what we choose to carry forward. It lights our way ahead, reminding us not only how far we have traveled, but how much farther we must go. To learn from history is to honor truth. To ignore it is to, is to risk repeating its pain. LGBTQ+ History Month calls us to remember the brave individuals whose courage carved a path towards justice. Their voices echo through every act of inclusion, every policy of compassion, every moment of visibility. Today, the City of Norman stands once again on the right side of history, not by chance, but by choice. And I, too, reaffirm my lifelong commitment to human rights and to education, not just here in Norman, but everywhere. People seek to live freely and authentically. My work ushering in comprehensive nondiscrimination protections for two S LGBTQ+ communities in 2019 and championing a citywide ban on so-called conversion therapy in 2021 is part of this great city's history, but it's also part of its present and its future. The work continues because history reminds us that progress is never truly finished. And so, together, we move forward rooted in truth, guided by compassion, and united in our shared humanity. Thank you. I am deeply, deeply honored to receive this proclamation.
Mine is not as elaborate as his. My name is Jerry Arias Watson. I am the current president of the chapter for PFLAG Norman. I come with my treasure in representation of our members and board members today. I want to thank Mayor Holman and the City Council for the beautiful proclamation and for the heart for this community. On behalf of Norman and its members and supporters, we honor and we receive this recognition. For those that do not know what we do and who we are, PFLAG is a nonprofit organization nationally and now internationally. What we do is that we educate, we advocate, and we provide support for our LGBTQ+ community, allies, and those that love them. LGBTQ+ Month wouldn't be possible without countless acts of courage and kindness from volunteers, leaders, friends, and neighbors, and from everyday people like us that simply choose to learn, listen, and to support, to advocate, and to love those that are like us and different from us. History always starts with a story, a moment that changed someone's life and sometimes changed the direction of a city, state, nation, or the world. Each of those stories matter. Each one reminds us that the progress begins when somebody dares to be seen and to be heard. This month, as we honor our history, we also carry with us the memory of those that we've lost due to hate, bullying, and lies and ignorance. We say their names not in sorrow alone, but in celebration, for the lives they lived, for the truth, for who they were, and the impact they left behind. Their mark on Norman and their spirit continues to shape Oklahoma for the better. My hope and my prayer is that small acts of love, like this proclamation, can help hearts change minds and maybe, just maybe, prevent one more life from being taken from us too soon, simply because of who they are and who they love. I truly believe our Creator placed something powerful in each one of our hearts, something meant for everyone, that is love. Love that comes from the Creator. Let's keep choosing empathy over judgment and kindness over fear. And that's all that I ask from Norman. Let's keep leading it with love. Thank you.
Okay. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of October 2025 as National Bullying Prevention Month in the City of Norman. Whereas during the first week of October 2006, Pacers National Bullying Prevention Center initiated National Bullying Prevention and Awareness Week to raise awareness about bullying. And whereas the campaign expanded in 2010 from one week to an entire month and was renamed Bullying Prevention Month. And whereas the purpose of Bullying Prevention Month is to educate, provide awareness, and change the culture around bullying, which was historically considered a childhood rite of passage, but now is known to cause school avoidance, decreased self-esteem, depression, and even self-harm. And whereas bullying can include physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional harm or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or a group of people. And whereas students who experience bullying are at an increased risk for poor school adjustment, sleep difficulties, anxiety, and depression. And whereas children who bully are at greater, who bully are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors. And whereas children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated. Now, therefore I, mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Bullying Prevention Month in the City of Norman and encourage all citizens to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our community safer for all children and adolescents. Pass and approve this 28th day of October 2025.
Hello. I'm Katrina Heim. I'm the Director of Counseling and Advocacy for Norman Public Schools. So, first of all, thank you to City Council for this recognition and, and, and thank you on behalf of Norman Public Schools. So, I am the prevention, the bullying prevention coordinator for the district as the Director of Counseling. We've just finished up a good three-year drive, really, to really revamp all of our prevention across our district in all ways. And so, our students at Norman get bullying prevention from pre-K all the way up to senior year. Because we do that through social skills, we do that through conflict resolution, we do that through all types of life skills that we teach, and most of all, we do it through modeling. And so, it's really important, and I think it's, it is important for you to recognize also that bullying, that the month that is Bullying Prevention Month follows the month that is Suicide Prevention Month. And so, everything that was in this proclamation is absolutely accurate, that we want our students to feel safe. One of the pillars for Norman Public Schools is that we want a culture of belonging, and that is a culture of belonging for all of our students, all of our staff, and all of our families in Norman Public Schools. And we work really, really hard to try to establish that because when students feel safe, they learn. And ultimately, that is our goal, is to teach students so that they can achieve academically and become citizens in Norman. So, thank you so very much. And I will say, it is not lost on me, and it should not be lost on everyone else, that prevention begins at home, and it begins with adults. And so, what we model, and I really appreciate, because I know there's really difficult conversations that happen here, and modeling proper etiquette and being able to disagree appropriately. And that's what our kids are watching. They're watching how we're interacting with one another, and that is what they will emulate. So, thank you very much for this proclamation.
Okay. Will Lisa Johnson-Billy please join me at the podium? Chickasaw Nation legislator and former state representative, I believe. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of November 2025 as Native American Indigenous Peoples Heritage Month in the City of Norman, in the City of Norman. Whereas in 1990, President George H.W. Bush approved a joint resolution designating the month of November National American Indian Heritage Month in recognition and honor of the 574 American Indian tribal nations and their contributions to the identity and development of the United States. And whereas this designated month is a time to acknowledge, celebrate, and honor the rich, diverse histories, cultures, traditions, presence, and contributions of the state of Oklahoma's 39 federally recognized tribes and their tribal citizens. And whereas the City of Norman is a supportive neighbor to the Absentee Shawnee, Citizen Potawatomi Nation, Kickapoo, Chickasaw, Sacanfox, and Seminole Tribes Nations. And whereas the City of Norman has one of the largest proportional population of... And whereas the city of Norman has one of the largest proportional populations of tribal citizens of all cities in Oklahoma. And whereas the city of Norman, its citizens and visitors, has and have unique and special circumstances and opportunities for learning about Oklahoma American Indian Indigenous Peoples' presence with its wealth of resources through the neighboring aforementioned tribal nations. The University of Oklahoma's Native American Studies Department, Native Nation Center, Sam Noble Museum of Natural History, American Indian Institute, and the OU American Indian Programs and Services, among others. And whereas it is the city of Norman's commitment to build an inclusive community. Now therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2025 as Native American Indigenous Peoples Heritage Month in the city of Norman and invite all citizens to join me in celebrating the spirit of inclusiveness and respect. Passed and approved this 28th day of October 2025.
On behalf, my name is Lisa Johnson-Billy. On behalf of the Chickasaw Nation City Council, Mr. Mayor, thank you so very much for the honor, for the distinction of being recognized. Governor Anatobi, Anno Atobi, he sensed his regrets that he is unable to be here this evening, and he very much, very much appreciates. If he were here, he would say it this way. The Chickasaw Nation, the unconquered and unconquerable Chickasaw people, never known to have lost a battle, known very well for its intrepid warriors, and in recent times, we've added a piece to that, also known for its dynamic woman. I will say, our people came here in 1837 under a forest removal that many of us are familiar with. My ancestors, my grandparents, rather than when they arrived here in this new land, this foreign land, they didn't feel sorry for themselves. In fact, they continued to do what they had been doing in our homelands of Mississippi. They established our churches, our original church, established just right after removal, is still very much in existence in Fillmore, Oklahoma at Sandy Creek. Pastor Allen Beck, where you will hear the Chickasaw language, and in our holy Bible, as well as in our songs. We also began to establish our schools, and our people, native people, serve in the military at the highest rate of any ethnicity, as do my husband and three children. And so when we came to this place, as Governor Anatobi has set the example for me my entire life, of being neighbors, of being together and supporting each other, because as Governor always says, we live in the same communities, we drive on the same roads, and we attend the same schools, and very often the same churches. And so we are one people. And so we are very honored that you would take an opportunity to honor, to honor my ancestors. Thank you very, very much. Asayopah. Yawkoki. Chpinselecho.
Well, Susan Arnn, 27-year, two-time breast cancer survivor, join me here at the podium. Okay. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the month of October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Norman. Whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month aims to raise awareness about the disease and raise funds for research into its cause, prevention, diagnosis, treatment, and cure. And whereas the general public is often aware of the disease, much more attention, much more, more action is needed to support reducing risk and improving early detection and treatment. And whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer among women in the United States and around the world after skin cancer. And whereas although rarer, men can also be diagnosed with breast cancer. And whereas progress in treatment and early detection has led to improved survival for people of all ages and races and with all stages of breast cancer. Whereas there are more than 3.5 million breast cancer survivors in the United States today, which is more than any other group of cancer survivors. And whereas the city of Norman acknowledges the extraordinary commitment and effort of researcher, scientist, physicians, nurses, and numerous nonprofit organizations who are dedicated to discovering the cure for breast cancer, as well as the strength of breast cancer survivors and their families and friends. Now therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Norman and invite all citizens to join me in continuing to promote awareness and education and to acknowledge the hard work and commitment of those working tirelessly to advocate for prevention and a cure. Passed and approved this 28th day of October 2025.
I am Susan Arnn, and I am a two-time, 27-year breast cancer survivor. I would like to thank Mayor Holman and all the City Council for this proclamation of recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I was diagnosed with breast cancer in 1998, 27 years ago, and I had a recurrence exactly five years later. I had great doctors here in Norman, and I continue to be cancer-free. One of the reasons I was asked to be honored tonight to accept this is to show anyone, if they're listening here, or they're listening otherwise, that they can beat the disease. My advice to everyone is simple to hear. Get a mammogram every year. Do self-exams, and always be hopeful. My path now is to help other women and men who are newly diagnosed to understand they can beat this disease. I met a woman, I'm sorry. I met a woman not too long after I was diagnosed, who told me she had been a survivor 20 years. She then gave me the hope to continue to fight and survive, and I did. I still see her and remember her, and I want people who are listening tonight to remember me, that there is hope for anyone to have a future that is bright. Thank you.
Okay. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming November 2nd through November 8th, 2025 as Oklahoma Mobility Week in the city of Norman. Whereas the city of Norman works every day building an inclusive community, which includes providing multiple mobility options in Norman by getting people where they need to go, from work and school to medical appointments, grocery stores, and other essential services. And whereas mobility options available in Norman include, but are not limited to, fixed route bus service, paratransit service, on-demand service, e-scooters, sidewalks, bike lanes, multimodal paths, and Amtrak service. And whereas the mobility options available are critical to those that choose or are unable to drive a motor vehicle. And whereas the mobility options provided benefit everyone in the city of Norman by reducing traffic and parking congestion, improving air quality, and making our city more equitable and accessible to all. Now therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the week of November 2nd through the 8th, 2025 as Oklahoma Mobility Week in the city of Norman and invite members of the public to walk, bike, or use public transportation to celebrate and discover new ways to navigate Norman. Passed and approved this 28th day of October 2025.
My name is Olivia Hook with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. I just wanted to take a moment and thank you, the city of Norman, and the mayor. Thank you, the people of Norman, and the transportation system. I work with a lot of communities across Oklahoma. We have Oklahomans that are aging and can't drive anymore. We have people who have disabilities and may never be able to drive, and they rely on others to get them to where they need to go. And all over Oklahoma, we need more communities like you in Norman, that are believing in transportation, that believe in the freedom of mobility, that mobility is freedom and is going to get everybody independence. And you have the mindset that we really absolutely need in our communities, so that people have access to get to where they need to go, and nothing's going to keep them homebound. So thank you so much, and this is truly an honor.
Moving on to council announcements, and we'll start in Ward 1.
I'd like to say hello to all of Ward 1. I'd also like to say that last couple of weeks, it's been really, really great seeing just the people that I've been talking to out and about, Norman kind of coming together, being a little bit stronger. We've had a couple of bad weeks, but we really are kind of bonding, especially Ward 1 and everything, because people that really care, and they're really out there. But tonight, I'm going to get a little more personal than usual, and just, there's somebody right now at OU Hospital, my son and wife, that's probably sitting in a hospital bed right now, watching this. I just want them both to know that I love them very much. We're dealing with something that we don't know how to fix it, and we don't know really what's going on yet. But I always believe in power in numbers, so I just ask everybody listening, everybody here tonight, whoever, whatever you believe in or talk to, please put a good word in for my son.
Thank you. Ward 2.
That's hard to follow. So my announcement is regarding an event that we're going to be having next week. If you've ever been interested in small-scale development, or curious what small-scale development even is, we'll be hosting a free lecture next Monday night at 5:30, 5:30 to 7:30. It will be at The Standard, who has graciously volunteered to host our event. They'll be offering happy hour prices and free appetizers. So please come join us for that event. There's a registration online, but like I said, it's a great way to get involved and get informed on what small-scale development looks like and entails, and highly encourage everybody to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward 3.
First of all, I'd like to say that it's a real honor to be here tonight and to represent Ward 3. I'm very grateful to the city's process and filling a vacant position. I'm also grateful in the trust that the Board had, that the Council has, the Mayor has, the trust that they placed in me to fulfill the duties of the position. I'm also looking forward to collectively working with the Council in alignment with our city charter, to not only address today's problems, but also shape and build a future that continues to serves and reflects the values, needs, and aspirations of Norman's residents. I think that's what the position requires. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward 4.
Yes. Good evening, Ward 4 in the city of Norman. Since we won't meet before November 8th or November 9th, I would like to highlight the following two events. On Saturday, November 8th, there will be an event starting at 3:00 PM in Francis Cape Park called Feed Thy Neighbor. Participants are encouraged to make chili and/or soup to feed neighbors since SNAP is on track to end November 1st. Anyone and everyone is invited. The organizers said this event is come and go as you please, so if you're just coming to take a bowl of soup to go, or chili, you're welcome to do that, or stay and build community, because that is also the spirit of the event. And the organizers even said that building community is more important now than ever. Other points of interest, the event is free of charge, no donations are expected, no time share speech, no religious lecture, just food and community, and a chili contest if you want to enter. Please find the Feed Thy Neighbor Facebook event to connect with the organizers. On Sunday, November 9th, in Ruby Grant Park, the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention will host their annual Out of Darkness Community Walk. Last year, Councilmember Holman, now Mayor Holman, and myself attended the event. We heard impactful stories and participated in the walk. Attendees are encouraged to wear bright, colorful clothing and glow-in-the-dark accessories. AFSP is the leading nonprofit dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide. Our chapter, or the Oklahoma chapter works across Oklahoma to provide prevention, education, advocate for mental health resources, and support survivors of suicide loss. This event is one of their most meaningful ways to bring the community together, raise awareness, and remind those who are struggling that they are not alone. I invite other members of Council to attend November 9th at around 5:00 PM if you're not busy. To register to walk and fundraise, please visit AFSPwalks.donordrive.com/norman. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward 5.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll keep this short and sweet. Firstly, I would like to congratulate our newest counselor. Thank you for stepping up, and I just want to say I look forward to working with you on all city items, and especially concerning my ward, thwarting the Oklahoma Turnpike Association at every turn that they come through. And then lastly, I would just like to wish everybody a safe, happy, and cavity-free Halloween.
Thank you. Ward 6.
Good evening. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight and for watching on YouTube. Again, I just want to extend my congratulations to you, sir, and thank you for putting your time and effort in to running for the spot for council, and look forward to working with you. And also, just everybody, keep your eyes peeled for ghosts and goblins on Friday night. We got a lot of trick-or-treaters, a really vibrant Halloween kind of tradition in Norman, so make sure that your headlights are on and you're watching the streets, and I hope everybody has a safe and fun Halloween. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward 7.
Yes, I have one announcement. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I have a couple, because I also want to congratulate Mr. Bruce, and thank you for stepping up to do that. But my announcement is on Sunday, November 9th, at Reeves Park, there will be a Veterans' Day parade and ceremony, so make sure you make it out to Reeves Park at 2:00, November 9th, 2:00, to check that out. Very, very important, honoring the past and the future. So it'll be a parade and a memorial ceremony, so that's Sunday, November 9th, 2:00. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward 8?
Thanks, sir. I just want to remind everyone that Saturday, November 15th, from 9:00 AM to noon, is at Westwood Aquatic Center Parking Lot. It is 1,007 Fairway Drive, is our Electronic Waste Collection Event. If it has a screen, if it's got copper in it, if it's got a microchip, whatever, essentially we'll take it. Anything with a cord, is what this says. And also, rest easy knowing that our contractor is R2V3 certified, which means all personal data will be wiped when they process it. It is a great and safe, easy way to get rid of all of your broken TVs and electronics, and it's a great way to keep the environment. Don't just throw them in ditches, don't send them to the transfer station. This is the safest, best way to do it, and it's super easy. Thank you. And it is November 15th, from 9:00 to noon, at Westwood.
Thank you. Just a couple of things from me. Just usual reminder about the committee meetings every Thursday. If you're interested in transportation, business, community affairs, finance, or oversight, all of them, every Thursday at 4:00 here at City Hall, we have those committees, and they are available to watch streaming live on YouTube, City of Norman YouTube channel, or you can go back and watch the replay. In the Transportation Committee that I chair, we get the update every month from city staff on public transit ridership, street construction, which many people have questions about all the time, whenever a street's going to be finished, or whatever's going on. Tune into that committee if you have interest in that. And then Finance Committee was two weeks ago, and we get the update from finance staff on how sales tax revenue is doing, how each department is spending money each month, where overtime is at. All of those things are in that public meeting, and all that information is available to the public. So, if you're interested in those things, I encourage you to follow along with those meetings on Thursday, and again, you can watch them on replay at your convenience. And please feel free to reach out to any of us if you have questions that you would like to see asked in those committee meetings, if you have ideas for policy changes, existing policies, policies that we don't have that we should have. All of those things are where we, in those committees, are where we work on those things, so please send us your feedback and questions or comments about that. And then also wanted to also encourage, as Councilor Peacock, everyone to sign up and register, attend the incremental development presentation activity on Monday here in Norman. Great opportunity if you have property, if you don't have property, if you're just interested in small-scale development, neighborhood-based development, people-sized, and you're not an expert in it, you aren't interested in going and hiring a big-time zoning attorney, you know, offense, Sean, if you're in here. But if you're wanting to do, know more about how to do small-scale projects yourself, and how to navigate the planning and zoning process in a city like Norman, and things like that, I encourage you, that's on Monday, as Councilor Peacock mentioned, to attend that. I will be there, and I'm looking forward to it. And then also wanted to just share a thanks to students at Norman North for inviting me to come speak to them last week at the high school. Really just had like an open town hall meeting, and I let them ask whatever questions they had, and the first one was about the library, so we spent 30 minutes probably talking about that. And so, it's really exciting to see about 40 high school students taking their lunch break to come talk to the mayor and ask questions about the city of Norman, and how they could get more involved in local issues. And so, I really appreciate them doing that. I'm looking forward to speaking to the students at Norman High School soon. And then if you have a group out there in Norman that you would like to have me or another council member attend, a Q&amp;A, or anything like that, or just to meet folks, please reach out to my office, or out to any of us, and we'll try to make that happen. And then also wanted to thank all of the organizers for Fall Fest this year, for getting a late start, getting things that wasn't going to happen, they figured out a way to make it happen, then the weather hit, and they couldn't do it downtown, so they were able to move it to the YFAC. And so, I appreciate city staff, working with them, organizers, to get that done and make that happen, so that the event could happen for all the kids and families this year. And so, it's a wonderful event. We typically close down Main Street for Fall Fest, and so, two times a year, really, downtown Norman Main Street gets closed to traffic. Norman Music Festival, and then Fall Fest, so once every six months, basically. And so, unfortunate that it wasn't able to happen downtown this year, but I look forward to it coming back next year, bigger and better and stronger than ever, hopefully. And I just appreciate all the organizers and businesses and sponsors that worked to get that done this year. And then, as was mentioned by Councilor Hinkle, the designated time for trick-or-treating this year by Norman PD is 6:00 to 9:00 PM on Friday, so should be a fun time. And that is all the announcements I have for this week. All right? Okay. Next up is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. Staff recommends approval, recommends that Item 8 through 38 be placed on the Consent Docket. I'll entertain a motion to place Items 8 through 38 on the Consent Docket.
Motion?
Second.
The motion on the floor is to place Items 8 through 38 on the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. Motion to place Items 8 through 38 on the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the Consent Docket.
Motion?
Second.
Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the Consent Docket?
Typically, we do not read off each item, but I wanted to call out Items 31, which is James Garner and Acres. There's a roundabout that staff is putting a grant in for. It deals with clean air, and if they get it, that will help reduce pollution and congestion by making it so that people are not idling for quite a while at that intersection when it's pretty busy. There's been multiple requests in my ward to do something about the traffic flow there. A roundabout is the most ideal. We cannot do a four-way stop as we had, because we have train tracks, and we cannot block the train tracks with cars that are stopped. So, I really hope that staff is successful in getting this grant. And then, another thing that has come up and been talked about in a committee is a pilot program for EmbarkWell that would help people 50-plus get around to different wellness centers, either the Adult Wellness Education Center, or perhaps the Y. So, they will be pursuing T-step funds to help fund that pilot, and again, I wish staff well in obtaining those funds. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no further comments from council, the motion on the floor is to approve the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. To approve the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Okay. Onto the non-consent docket. Item number 39 is an ordinance upon second and final reading, and rezoning property generally located north of Etowah Road on 72nd Avenue Southeast to grant special use for a public utility in A2 Rural Agricultural District for a strip, piece, or parcel of land. There is currently a motion on the floor to adopt ordinance 0-2425-15 on second reading, section by section, from council's meeting of February 25th, 2025. Subsequently, there was a motion to postpone the ordinance until the court case was settled and a verdict was rendered on the eminent domain issue. The documentation included in the item indicates that this has taken place. The ordinance comes before council this evening for further consideration, and I will recognize, Councilmember, no fire for a motion.
So, not all parties involved could be here tonight, and in light of that, all parties have decided that it would be best to postpone this until December 9th, so request a motion for postponement until December 9th.
Are there any comments from council regarding the postponement? Seeing none? This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on the postponement. Remarks should be directed to council only and limited to whether you support or object to the postponement. Does anyone wish to speak? Okay, seeing none? Are there any final comments from council regarding the postponement? Seeing none? Okay. The motion on the floor is to postpone the ordinance to December 9th, 2025. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to postpone passes unanimously, with Councilmember Hinkle outside the chambers.
Okay. Item 40, an ordinance upon second and final reading, an ordinance of the council of the City of Norman, repealing all related codes and fines for the municipal criminal charge of peeping tom. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading, section by section.
Motion?
Second.
I'll recognize Deputy Chief Jackson to make a presentation.
This won't exactly be a presentation, but it will clarify why this ordinance is being pulled. I requested that it be pulled, and the reason why I requested that it be pulled is that most people think that when you have a person that peeps in windows and does things like that, that they're fairly harmless, a little creepy, but harmless. And I will say that most people that do that, that peep in the windows, usually never escalate to an entirely different level, but sometimes they do. I've worked, I've been deputy chief for a few years, but before I was deputy chief, I actually did real police work. I was a major case investigator for the City of Norman Police Department. I worked 19 years back in that unit, most of which I worked major crimes. Primarily, I worked sexual assaults. And during the course of my employment working sexual assaults, I learned that those individuals aren't as harmless as we would sometimes think them to be. By that, I mean, not all peepers escalate or involve into people that actually assault people, break in and assault people. However, of all the serial rapists and sexual assaults that I worked, those individuals were all peepers. I have three words, and this is going to sound kind of odd tonight, because the name Bruce has been bandied around a lot. Robert Howard Bruce was the guy that I worked, one of the last serial rapists that I got, and I would like to say that I actually caught Mr. Bruce and sent him off to prison, but I did not. And the reason why I did not catch Mr. Bruce is that Mr. Bruce operated, knowing that if he were caught peeping, that officers would file a municipal charge, misdemeanor charge on him, in municipal court. Municipal courts typically are not a court of record, so it's hard for guys like me, investigators, to track down and research and work those types of individuals, because that information stays in that particular court. If you file in a state court, then it enters in the triple I, the Interstate Identification Index, and that's one of the systems we use to track people like Robert Howard Bruce. Robert Howard Bruce started sexually assaulting women in Norman in 1983, three years before I started working at the Norman Police Department. So, if you do the math, I've been there almost 40 years. 1983 to 1987, he sexually assaulted women in Norman, mainly college students. Then he went quiet for a number of years. We didn't hear from him until 2001, and in 2003, I worked the first, I worked one of the victims after 2001. And how he got caught was that in Pueblo, Colorado, he sexually assaulted women in four states, by the way, New Mexico, Arizona, Oklahoma, and Colorado. He got caught in Pueblo, Colorado, by a very observant and astute young police officer who happened to be patrolling one night, saw a guy peeping in a window. You know, like most cops, we can be a little bit lazy, and so we, you know, the easiest way to handle those types of individuals is do a docket, sign and go, and file it in municipal court. This individual, this officer, realized that there was something weird about this guy. This guy was different. And so, what he did was, he got with his supervisor, said, hey, I'd like to file a state charge on this guy. I think there's something different about him, something awful about him. Supervisor said, man, we're busy, go tonight, do a docket, go tonight. Says, no, sir, I think this guy, he's a little stern intervention. So, they agreed, they filed a charge on him in state, state court, court. The issue is, once Robert Howard Bruce realized that there was a state charge on him, then they would enter his DNA in CODIS. And all of these sexual assaults across the region, they will now, the gig is up, he would be captured. So, what did Bruce do? He tried to murder the police officer, did an improvised bomb outside his garage, wife saw it, called her husband, what is this? I have no idea, called the bomb squad out, and after that, Mr. Bruce got caught, and off to jail he went. So, the question is, why am I down here? Why did I pull the ordinance? I think a lot of that pretty much explains the why behind it. I can go into much more detail, but I want to be due diligence in the time span that I'm allowed here. But I will say this, why that brought me back to this particular position years later is that I owe it. I owe it to the survivors of sexual assault, to all those cases I worked, for all those many years. I owe it to those victims. So, here I am tonight, hope you guys approve this.
It's your opinion that municipal charges compared to being state charges could have led to his capture much sooner, potentially?
It could have led to his capture much sooner, and he realized that. He knew that. That's why he knew that most people were going to file a municipal charge on him, because municipal courts, of course, not a court of record. He got away with it for almost 23 years. 13 women were assaulted here in Norman before he was caught.
And if there had been state charges in Oklahoma and other states, he would have been in that database.
He would have been in that database.
That searchable database that you could have accessed, so...
Not only would he be in that database, but we also operate on things called MO, Modus Operanda. Modus Operanda is your tag. It's what you do that's unique to you. So, we also research the MO through triple I, and to establish whether or not you were involved in any particular crime.
And so, with this change, anybody that was a Norman police officer, encountered somebody who's a peeping tom, that person would be given state charges?
Yes, they would. And the state charge is still a misdemeanor charge. It's not a felony.
Okay. And so, just to be clear, in your opinion, in the police department's opinion, removing the municipal ordinance on this and deferring to state law is, would help better address this situation, I guess is the way to say it?
Yes, it does a couple of things. It would actually assist us in identifying and being able to track these individuals. They can't then go through from city to city and not have that court of record. Now it's entered into the state, we know where you've been and what you've done. Also, it allows the prosecutors to research, and if it requires a stiffer fine, if they are habitual peepers and sexual assaulters, then they can research that, and now they have that as part of their tool, another tool in their toolbox, to get a stiffer sentence.
And I don't want to relitigate the whole ordeal, but from what I understand, this man would travel to Dallas from another state, and then drive to Norman on multiple occasions, commit these crimes, drive back to Dallas, and then fly back to where...
Fly back to whatever state. I think at that point, he was in Colorado or Arizona.
So, very difficult for a detective in Norman to probably track that.
Extremely difficult. As a matter of fact, you know, I went to Austin, Texas, and worked with those investigators. Once we identified we had the serial rapists working in our area, they had them in Austin as well, again, university towns. And we worked that thing and worked that thing, and no, we could not, never established who the suspect was until Pueblo, Colorado.
So, we're not making it easier to be a peeping tom in Norman. We're making it harder. Would that be your opinion?
We would make it, well, we're not making it harder to be a peeping tom, we're just making it harder to get away with that level of predatory behavior.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilor Grant?
Yes. I believe it was in a study session, we were talking about this, and obviously, I'm supportive. We've talked after that. Just so everybody understands, and to hone in on the misdemeanor part, when we're talking about juveniles or people with intellectual disabilities... about juveniles or people with intellectual disabilities, or anybody who's not rising to the level of a serial rapist, um, being filed in the state and going through the court system, they take into account every offender's background and, you know, uh, assign the appropriate level of justice to each person.
Sure. It has been my experience, particularly here with this DA in this county, that they take those things into consideration. You know, they try to defer people and help people as best they can, particularly, you know, these types of offenders. So, uh, it's been my experience that, yes, they do take those, those types of measures and, and psychological counseling and things of that nature to try to get folks back on track.
Okay. Uh, that was, that was, all I wanted to ask was a clarifying question, so thank you.
All right, any other comments from council? Councilor Bruce?
Uh, first of all, no connection.
I did not think so, sir.
Yeah, as, as I understand this, you know, first offense, national database.
Pardon me?
First offense, national database.
Yes, triple I, yes, sir. If you're convicted, if you are convicted of that particular crime, it would be entered into, uh, CODIS.
And then, uh, the, it's an up to fine, up to imprisonment. So many, it's up to, it's not minimum, right? It's up to.
So now you're getting to the legalese of that, and I am not a prosecutor, because there's so many different components and aspects of what they're doing and, and the criteria, I mean, that's a little bit out of my, out of my area.
The way I understand it, it, um...
But there is a, if you're asking about misdemeanor and felony, misdemeanor is, is the lesser of the charges. The penalties are far less. It's like county jail and things of that nature. Felonies tend to rise to prison, which is a longer term.
The up to is higher than Norman's up to, from what I understand, right?
You mean like if, if it was filed in municipal court?
Well, it's, uh, the fine and the imprisonment time is greater than what Norman currently has on the books.
We wouldn't send anyone, we don't have, we don't have felonies in Norman municipal court. Our ordinances aren't felonies or misdemeanors.
Deputy chief, we have city attorney who might be able to...
Hi, Catherine Walker. Um, yes, so the municipal ordinance, we can only charge or sentence someone up to sixty days in county jail and/or a seven hundred and fifty dollar fine, that's the maximum. Under state law, that's higher for a misdemeanor. I believe in, this one is, uh, a year in jail and a thousand dollar fine, and then, you know, if it escalated to a felony, that would be higher, uh, for a felony.
So the greater deterrents besides, besides, the greater deterrents is the national database. So if I'm a predator, that's the greater deterrent.
Yes, sir, that's a little bit more teeth.
Thank you.
Okay, any other com, questions from council? Okay. All right, this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on this item. Remarks should be directed to council only. Madam clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item?
Um, yes, sir, we have Trey Kirby.
Trey Kirby, Ward five. I hope y'all pass this. I really appreciate what he's doing. Thirty-six years ago last week, a kid was walking home from school, got grabbed, and things were done. It's one of my best friends. He still lives with this thirty-six years later. It is sad that it's that minimum of a fine as it is, but if somebody's gonna hurt somebody in that manner, that they're gonna live with it for the rest of their life, far as I'm concerned, we should hang them. So y'all should really pass this, because nobody should be touching kids or women.
Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward four. I have to admit, I'm a little bit confused about the justification request, and, and there may be a good answer for this, uh, but it seems to me that right now, any police officer who catches a peeping tom has options about where they're going to file this sort of thing. That seemed to be the unstated assumption, although nobody said it in particular. Hope somebody will correct me if I'm wrong. And so what I'm wondering is, what motivates an officer to take it to municipal court? Is it their perception of the seriousness of the peeping tom activity? I don't know what you call that, um, the peeping? Uh, or, uh, so, so if that's the case, uh, it seems to me that that might be an issue that we could handle via training. But my, my real concern here, and maybe there's a good answer to this, I think I'm following up on council member Bruce's suggestion, um, is, how, how does officer discretion work, right? If, if, if an officer sees someone who's young or they may think has certain kinds of issues, is it, is it possible for them to just send somebody away with a warning? So I mean, my, my real concern here is that if, if we're putting things in municipal court now because of the officer perception that it's not a big deal, that if we get rid of the municipal thing, we'll just not charge people? And that would seem odd to me. So I, I, so I don't really understand the sort of discretion that's involved, so I hope somebody can, can clear that up for me. So, you know, to, to, to make that probably in a shorter way, since I was working that out in my head, is there any chance that eliminating the, the municipal crime will make it more likely that people won't get charged with anything? So, that, I mean, that's like legitimately a question, I have no idea. So if anybody wants to speak to that, it would be great. Thanks.
Diana Hutzel.
Good evening, Diana Hutzel, Ward five. So tonight, council is being asked to remove the peeping tom offense from Norman's municipal code so that future prosecutions can be handled by the Cleveland County District Court rather than municipal court. And some of what I'm gonna say is kinda piggyback and kinda support, uh, the police department on, on what was just said earlier, but, um, I support this action, but it highlights a broader issue. Our municipal court does not operate as a court of record, a status that I would like to see council change. Any municipality in Oklahoma with a population of over sixty-five thousand can establish a court of record. Norman has more than twice that population, yet we have not taken this critical step. For context, Oklahoma City and Tulsa have municipal courts of record. Being a court of record means the state recognizes the court's proceedings as official records. It allows the court's decisions to create legally binding precedent, and it gives the court authority to hear a broader range of cases. It also expands the scope and enforceability of fines and penalties. In twenty twenty-four, I attended the Citizens Academy where I met several of the dedicated professionals behind our municipal court system. I was extremely impressed by their commitment, and it underscored how much the work we already do deserves full legal recognition. At the city council retreat this past summer, I raised the question about establishing a municipal court as a court of record, and at that time, I was told much of the infrastructure is already in place, and the main step would be to make the necessary personnel adjustments required to support a court of record. As, as a court not of record, our municipal court lacks the authority to create precedent. This limits its legal power, the types of cases it can hear, the fines it can levy, and the penalties it can impose. Cases exceeding its jurisdiction or those that are appealed go to district court. That adds time, consumes staff resources, and increases taxpayer dollars spent. And it also creates longer timelines, extra court appearances, and higher legal costs for defendants, many of whom are your constituents. The transfer of cases to district courts, to district court does not relieve the city of Norman of costs. We will still pay for pre-arreignment incarceration at the Cleveland County Detention Center, as well as the time our officers and staff spend preparing evidence, reports, and presenting testimony. Yet, when cases are handled in district court, the city of Norman receives none of the fines or fees collected. The removal of the peeping tom offense from our municipal court highlights the practical impact of our court's current status, not just in terms of legal limitations, but also in terms of cost and efficiency. It raises the question, would pursuing recognition as a court of record better serve our community? It would allow the city to handle more cases locally, generate municipal revenue from fines and fees currently collected by the county, and create legally recognized precedents that strengthen our municipal legal framework. I've drafted a proposed ordinance to allow the city council to take this formal step under Title XI, Section twenty-eight dash one oh one of Oklahoma law. After tonight's meeting, when I get home, I'll send the draft ordinance by email for your review, um, with the goal of hopefully moving this discussion forward. I strongly urge council to take the necessary steps to establish Norman's municipal court as a court of record, formally acknowledged and recognized under Oklahoma law, so it can handle cases like this directly, exercise its full legal authority, and no longer be hindered by restrictions that force certain cases into district court. Thank you. And I actually have three copies that I'll give to Brenda.
Are there any final comments from council on this item? Councilor Grant?
Yes. I would like to ask deputy chief Jackson to come back up and clarify on how officers use discretion to determine how a peeping tom now or under this change would be handled.
Absolutely. I tried this back when I promoted out of the unit, back in two thousand and ten or eleven, and I spoke to my officers back then and says, hey, guys, you know, let's not file, let's submit these types of charges in municipal court, let's, you know, you know, I explained it's not a court of record, and I explained the why behind it. And that worked for a little bit, and then guys kinda forgot, and they were submitting those types of charges in municipal court again. And so without anything like actually pulling the ordinance, you know, over a period of years, guys will then go back, and they will do, they will not have a rigged Jackson to explain the why behind it, and they'll go back to filing those types of charges in municipal court.
Okay. And then could, uh, city attorney Walker, uh, speak to the court of record?
I'll do my best. Uh, we have looked at this over the years. It is allowed for cities, as, as Ms. Hutzel said, for, uh, cities with certain populations. And in fact, when the municipal court was, was renovated and moved over, uh, we did include space, because we were looking thirty years into the future, we included space for a possible expansion at some point. I think the primary reason why that hasn't happened is, is whether or not there's a need, but also the staffing that would be required. We would need a court reporter, we would probably need a judge on staff potentially, depending on how we do those dockets. Currently, we have judges that come in, and we have dockets three times a week, uh, at four PM for adults, and then once a week for juveniles in the mornings. So there would be a lot of operational changes, but a lot of budgetary, uh, potential impact there too, that would need to be looked at.
And currently, our budget is flat, and we sort of have a soft hiring freeze, if memory serves, so it would be probably until we're in a budget, better budgetary condition to hire those employees.
Yeah, that would be something council would have to determine, and then looking at your budget numbers, whether or not you have room for those additional staff and, and the cost, go with that.
Okay. Thank you, that's it.
Might be good for one of the council committees to maybe take that up as an agenda item, just as a point of discussion or an update for council about court of record versus what we have now, and if there's revenue that could be made that the county's currently getting, is it possible that that could pay for the staffing that we would need to do that? So I think that'd be a good, uh, item for a committee to at least have a discussion about, an update from staff. Deputy chief, would you maybe answer just about the, the, I, the comment about if there's no municipal charge and it's only state, would officers feel like they don't wanna the hassle of that, so they just don't, they just let them go, they don't do anything, anything like that?
No, they wouldn't do that. Our guys will continue to do what's right, my folk, people in our community. You know, if it is a state charge and it's not that much more effort for them to do that, they will file it in the state, in a state charge. Like in Colorado, when that supervisor was arguing with his officers about, hey, sign and go, that is quicker, you know, but, but only by a, a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Council member Bruce?
Hi, I'm, I'm just a little confused with the court of record and the reporting to a national database. So i, if Norman's court system becomes court of record on, on this, would it still, would it report to national database? The offense?
Who knows? Maybe the, the city...
Oklahoma law, as far as municipal courts are concerned, allows two types of courts. One is a court of record, one is a court not of record. Our municipal court is a municipal court not of record. Both municipal courts of record and municipal courts not of record have original jurisdiction with regard to violations of municipal ordinances. So if, unless the municipality has an ordinance prohibiting something, um, you're not gonna be able to prosecute it in municipal court, it's gonna have to go to district court, regardless of whether you're a court of record or court not of record. I've had this conversation with our court administrator with regard to the issue of being a court of record, and the issue has to do with cost. As Ms. Walker was talking about, municipal courts of record, which Oklahoma City and Tulsa have municipal courts of record, they have full-time judges. So you're gonna have to employ a full-time judge, you're probably gonna need at least two, because there're gonna be occasions when one of them is probably not gonna be there. You're gonna have to have at least two court reporters, um, because again, um, if you have a municipal court of record, the difference is, when you have proceedings in municipal courts of record, a record is created by the court reporter. So she's in there transcribing everything everybody says for all of your court hearings, whereas if you have a municipal court not of record, you don't have that court reporter cost. Cases brought in municipal courts not of record are appealed to district court. So if you were convicted in our court, um, you would appeal to district court where there would be a court, that is a court of record. So any proceedings you had in district court on appeal, um, would be handled usually by a special judge, um, and you would have a court reporter present. The difference between municipal courts of record is your appeal is directly to a court of criminal appeals. So there's a little bit of an extra step with regard to municipal courts not of record, but you ultimately get to the court of criminal appeals. If you lost at the district court, your case would then go to the court of criminal appeals. The difference is, in municipal courts of record, some cases are eligible to be, um, some cases are eligible for, for, um, being processed where your information goes to OSBI, and some are not. So it's kind of a hit or miss deal. Usually, if you are arrested and taken to jail, you're fingerprinted, and your information would go to OSBI, but if you're cited and somebody, and released, then that information wouldn't be captured, and you, it would not go to OSBI. So it's a little bit of a hit and miss type set of circumstances, whereas if it goes to district court, then that information will go to OSBI, and everybody's sort of being treated the same. I mean, again, if you have two different individuals and one officer decides, um, to, to cite you in municipal court, whereas another officer decides to cite you in district court, the second person's information goes to OSBI, the first person doesn't. And I think that's creating a little bit of what, um, deputy chief Jackson is talking about, um, in terms of those difficulties with regard to investigating those cases when you don't really have a complete record under those circumstances. And this just allows us essentially to treat everybody the same in terms of that offense, because their information will all go to district court, it'll all go to OSBI, they'll be fingerprinted, um, and all that information will be standardized. So there is that difference between courts of record and courts of not of record, but our issue, again, talking to our court administrator, has really been the cost issue, that based on our current level of citations, um, the amount of revenue they're bringing in doesn't justify the cost of, um, making it a court of record.
Any further questions from council? Okay. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. Adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion?
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
All right. Item number 41, a regular old zoning proposal. All right. Rezoning properties, an ordinance upon second and final reading, rezoning property generally located at the southwest corner of Rock Creek Road and Porter Avenue intersection from C-2 General Commercial District, RM6 medium-density apartment district, and A-2 Rural Agricultural District to PUD, Planned Unit Development District. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion?
Is there a representative from the, for the applicant to make a presentation? It looks like there is Mr. Eager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we do appreciate these being as boring and uneventful as possible, so thank you for that. We, we hope they go quickly. This is the last one of the night. We appreciate you all very much for a long night. Welcome to the dial, as council member. And Mayor, thank you for your comments earlier. Let me get through this one, hang on here, that was the last item. Okay, so we are up in North Norman Night, Ward Eight, bordered by Ward Six, up on a property called the Toll Property. This is the west side of North Porter Avenue, south side of West Rock Creek Road, the ILOF Cemetery on the right side of the screen, Norman North High School on the left side of the screen, and we are right in between those longtime facilities in Norman. So that's the subject property. Here's your city GIS. I always like to show this. It's a pretty clean GIS. There is no flood plain, just the large pond in the center that is tightly surrounded by WQbz Zone. We are not altering that pond whatsoever, not changing any part of it. In fact, we are enjoying that as an amenity with this development so that we can celebrate it and then put a trail around it. So there is one sewer line running through this site, transposing to the north, and otherwise it's a pretty clean site, not much on it. Again, Norman North to the left, cemetery to the right, and a longtime development to the south. The site is already zoned pretty intensively. Surprising, you would look at the site and you would think this is just an A-2 site. It is not. It is, the pond is zoned A-2, but the, the sort of northeast quadrant is zone C-2, which is the most intense commercial zoning district we have in Norman. There's only a house on it right now, but it is zoned full C-2. And the south part of this site, and the far northwest part of this site, is zoned full RM6, which is the most intense multifamily district we have in Norman, Oklahoma. So, so the zoning is, is already fairly intense. We are actually very close to this zoning. I'm going to show you in the PUD that we're doing. We're using a PUD so that we can intermix commercial and residential on each of these areas, which RM6 does not allow and C-2 does not allow. So with a PUD, we can intermix uses and have an opportunity for, for sort of the interchange of those different uses. That's the existing zoning, existing AIM Norman. The character is suburban, the land use is urban high. Proposed zoning is PUD, a no change in AIM. We tend to meet AIM, I think, fairly well across the board, and we're consistent with it. We appreciate staff's reports nowadays that go item by item on AIM and tell us what we've done consistently or not. I think we've met almost all of them in this case. Staff has said in the report the proposed development is consistent with urban high land use policies, and so we're glad to see that. The site plan, this is the site plan, as we always struggle to get everything on the screen here so you could see it very well, but overall, it's about 70 acres, a large pond in the, in the middle of it will again remain unchanged. We're not changing anything with that. But there are basically two areas. On the upper right, outlined in red, is Area 1. That is predominantly commercial, and you might recall from the map earlier, that's where it's zoned C-2, basically. So we're taking the area that was zoned C-2 and leaving it as commercial, but with a PUD, we can say that we have the allowance for upper story residential in that district. The main part of this is, on the right side, you see basically a commercial center fronting Porter, and then behind it would be probably offices, but commercial uses would be allowed across that space. And then on the far upper left is another small area of commercial that would, would probably be the, the farthest out phase of the project. Then on the south side is Area 2. That is the multifamily part of the site. And I should have highlighted earlier, the southern side of this, the bordering neighborhood is already RM2. So it is already multifamily zoned as well. It's, it's basically duplex neighborhood, a pretty longtime neighborhood. And so we are buffering up against that with multifamily. And on sort of the Area 2, you see the lower right side is, is sort of apartment complex. That would be roughly 300 units of the more typical apartment complex structures. And then on the left side of that lower end would be more of townhomes or duplexes and probably a senior housing concept in that area, probably about 60 units in that location. Staff wrote, "This is consistent with the residential policies, and that will accommodate a variety of housing densities." We'd like to have different housing densities now in every project, if we could do that. And they wrote that it's consistent with surrounding zoning as the residential components of but existing residential while the commercial and office uses are proposed on a hard corner. I would note that on the far upper corner is an existing house. It's the only existing use on the property that will remain as a house, and the PUD has written to say as long as that is used as a house, it can remain that. It is going to be zoned commercial, but if we actually have to do a project later, we would have to do a slight site plan amendment for that corner when that comes through. So, but the use of the zoning would be put forth now. Again, 68 acres, 69 acres, approximately about 16.8 units per acre. That's good, because the AIM plan says that we needed to be roughly 12 units per acre and more, so we have met that with the character of the, of the land use plan. We've protected the WQbz Zone, which basically is just a tight outline of that pond. We've protected that. Area 1 is about six lots, Area 2 is 11, seven through 11 lots. And again, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat by saying it promotes interconnectivity by extending Crystal Circle and existing street into the development site. No traffic, no traffic operational issues are anticipated due to this development. Green space, we're of course leaving a lot of green space, and oftentimes on WQbz's, I come to you and I show you our reengineering of the WQbz. This one is not doing this. That one, this one is actually showing the full buffer of basically the 100 feet out from the WQbz and the pond, and they have intentionally pulled the structures away from the water's edge. And they've done so in a good way, I think, in that you see a dark green outline. What we're really excited about with this development is it is including a trail system around it, that we, we hope will go over and connect with one on Norman North that is not committed yet. I do not want to represent that. Norman North has not said they will do that, and no way do I want to say that will happen, but we're hopeful that someday the Norman Public School System will work with us, and I, I think they will. That, that is probably a good thing, and so hopefully we'll work with them and connect this trail all the way around the pond. But we don't own the property on the left, they own that, and the water goes into that property, so we're not able to do that of our own motion. But that is the idea, and that's what we hope to make happen as this develops and that trail goes around the site. So we're pretty excited about that. This did go to Parks Board. Parks Board unanimous approval for a private parkland solution, and if you see the dark green in the middle, that is the private parkland, which will be basically developed as private parkland with some amenities and features that would help that area as well. Staff wrote, "The proposed development is consistent with the protected and sensitive areas policies due to no proposed development within areas designated as protected and sensitive." So in summary, that's the plan in context. You can see it now, and you see now where that pond sort of dips all the way over into Norman North's property, so we can't of our own motion create the trail around the pond, but we're pretty excited with opportunities that that puts forth with Norman North and as we work with them to develop this out. So in closing, staff wrote, "The proposed development is consistent with the AIM Norman Comprehensive Land Use Plan because it proposes a mix of uses, increased interconnectivity, utilizing and extending existing city utilities, inclusion of open space around the pond, increased pedestrian infrastructure, and a mix of housing types as proposed in the PUD. There have been no protests of any kind that we're aware of. We did a pre-development, have a few citizens come, ask a few questions, but nobody came to planning commission and spoke, and so we're not aware of any issues or controversies at all on this one. It was unanimous approval at planning commission, and we were very pleased with their comments as a couple of commissioners commented how they really liked this project quite a lot." So with that, happy to answer any questions. The civil engineer is here if you have any particular questions about that, and I thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Let's see, are there any questions from counsel regarding this item? And we have Councilmember Peacock.
Thank you. Just real quick on stormwater, does the existing pond satisfy all the stormwater requirements? Or am I, are those three extra little blue areas, are those additional holding areas?
Yeah, and I just confirmed that again with engineer, just to make sure I was right on this, but it does not, the, the existing pond is not a part of the stormwater solution. Those three ponds that you see on the right, you see the darker blue, that is our stormwater solution. So this development will drain into the new detention ponds, as shown there, and they will detain the water and slow release historically.
So they won't drain into the pond necessarily? Natural drainage, but you won't have any pipe drainage going into the pond?
Right. Well, it will first be detained in the, in the stormwater.
Gotcha, okay.
In the, in the detention ponds, yeah.
Thank you very much.
And then that detained and then released, and it drains to the pond from that point?
Correct. And a little bit like the police officer, I'm probably getting beyond what I should speak to, and I should have the civil engineer come up and make sure I don't misspeak on any of these items. So Derek, Derek with Cedar Creek Engineering, talk through the stormwater if you will, please.
Yep. So city code does not allow us to release at a faster rate after development than it does historically, so those detention ponds hold water back and then release them at a rate that is equal to or lesser than what is currently discharging into the pond. So.
Okay.
Water still does go to the pond, and we just hold it back, so it releases at a slower rate.
And that's where the property naturally drains anyway right now, is that pond?
Correct, yeah. And we have the right as landlord to drain there, we just can't overburden that pond beyond what historical was.
Okay. Appreciate that. Would you, so right now, the property's pretty well covered in trees.
It is.
What is the tree preservation or plan, if there is one?
Well, we, we intend to cover it mostly with housing, so in full candor, most of those trees would be taken out, except for around the water's edge. We intend to keep a good number of them around the water's edge, but do also recall, every time we put in a parking lot, such as you see over there, we have to line those parking lots with trees per ordinance, so there would be a significant new inclusion of trees across this site.
And like trees that line Porter and then line Rock Creek along the edge of the property?
Yeah, you see across the top, there is no real plans until you get to the sort of final phase of the upper left, there's a little bit of a buffer, I think it's 20 feet setback, so we can certainly maintain the trees in those areas. And on Porter, there's a 20-foot setback as well, so we can maintain the trees in those front areas as well. But there's no specific plan for the tree plan across this site, written into the PUD or otherwise.
Would there be an effort to, where you're not putting a building?
Certainly.
You don't have to scrape the whole property, right?
Developers more and more recognize the, the value of trees. Citizens like them, the users like them. More and more, we see developers try to maintain the trees as much as they can. At the same time, it's always a competing agenda though because of stormwater. We have to make sure that we topography the site to manage the stormwater and flow it into those ponds. And so we have to, we have to some degree topo the site, as we call it, to drain it accurately into those ponds so we don't flood the streets or anybody else. So that is always sort of our competing challenge with trees and, and topography.
Okay. And then sidewalks, the sidewalk, there is an existing sidewalk on Porter. Would this development be replacing that sidewalk with a new sidewalk? And there is not a sidewalk on Rock Creek Road on that side of the street.
Right.
So would this development be adding a new sidewalk on that?
We, we have to add sidewalks where there are not. I don't recall if we're replacing the one. Do you recall?
I believe most of the time, planning, if this current sidewalk does not meet ADA, then we have to replace it to meet ADA. If it, if it's in good shape and it meets ADA, we can try to leave it as much as possible.
Okay. And then the Rock Creek Road, there's not a sidewalk, you'll be adding a sidewalk along?
We have to, because of the plat, yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that on the record. And then the last one is the parking. So the commercial parts of this, are they designed in a way that reflects that we don't require a minimum of spaces? Is this the, how many spaces the developer thinks they need for this?
It, it is, Mayor, yes, they always do this to the, to the minimum they think they need, but that is marketable. It is always really hard for us at this stage to say what the parking count is or should be, because when you're looking at a commercial center such as you see on the upper right there, and I don't have a pointer on this, but on the upper right, say for instance, restaurants typically have a much more higher parking need than a two-person Edward Jones office. So it is really hard to know at this point what will occupy those buildings, and until we know that, we don't really know what the, the parking count is. So, so usually it's the best guess of the developer at this point is just hit the middle. For instance, back when you had a code, a parking code, restaurants required one space per 100 square feet of the customer service area. Offices required one space per 300 square feet of the total office. And you can go on and on with that. Retail was a different figure. Everything had a different figure. So oftentimes, what developers do is just try to hit the middle when they're at this stage of conceptual drawings, thinking that they'll probably have some restaurant, they'll probably have some office, and that way they can hopefully hit it there. But, but the, the parking count typically is flexible, the city has no minimum anymore. The site plan, we can modify a little bit. City staff, if we go too far with it, we'll call it too much of a revision, and we have to come back for a site plan amendment, but we have some flexibility to do a little more parking or less, depending on how it, how the users come out.
Okay. Okay, let's see, Councilmember Grant?
I just wanted a little clarification. I like the mixed-use nature, and I was in the list of uses, looking at the ground story, large multifamily residential buildings. The ground story will be commercial and/or retail, like, or is there the potential for it to be all housing?
And, Councilmember, I want to make sure I'm clear, are you looking at development area one or two? And I'm looking at pages 995 and 997 are the two different areas.
I'm looking at development area two, and it is page 11 on the...
Mm-hmm. On the PUD.
Yes, the clean version.
Yeah. So it is not required to have commercial uses on the ground story that would be an allowable use if, and so I think that would play out, certainly on all of those areas, you would not imagine that all of that would be ground floor commercial, but it's written as an allowable use for the developer to choose if they want to pick parts of those areas and put in a ground floor coffee shop or whatever it may be.
So they'll be built to commercial standard with the expectation that it could be, or it will be flexible when they get to that part of the development and they've decided, oh, I think, you know, housing is what's needed here because this won't support commercial, or hey, it will support commercial, so it will have housing on top.
Well, it would be a time of building permit, when they plan it, when they design it, you know, as Councilmember Peacock knows, you, you get into serious issues of fire separation when you get commercial on the ground floor and residential on top. You get into situations of life safety egress, floor separation, a lot of those issues, and that would all be determined at building permit stage, not really at zoning stage.
Okay. I just needed that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay. Questions? Okay. All right. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on this item. Remarks should be directed to counsel only. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item?
We have one, Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward Four. You know, I recognize that this is probably going to pass tonight, and I don't have anything in particular to say about the very details here, but as part of my sort of now regularly scheduled discussion about PUD kinds of issues, I do think it's important that we think about the process which we're going through when we talk about PUDs and SPUDs. And I think it's really important that the city sort of reconceptualize, or maybe even better, like retro-conceptualize, what we're doing when we're adopting planned unit districts and small planned unit districts. Right now, as an alternative apparently to reworking our zoning code, we're starting to treat SPUDs and PUDs as almost a matter of right. That's not quite exactly right, but there's a sort of presumption that if it's a PUD or a SPUD, we should probably say yes unless anybody has a particular kind of complaint. We need a reason not to approve them. And I, I think that's a mistake given the way that our code is written, right? The way it's actually written, and the way it was originally conceptualized, was as, as sort of a special deal, right? PUDs are something that the city staff is supposed to negotiate with developers, and they're supposed to give developers sort of special leeway in return for a certain kind of wow factor, right? I think the terminology is in the, the staff report, but it's like, you know, special use and, and something... use and, and something that's supposed to be unique and creative, and we've just completely gotten away from that. So I mean, I think even if you think about the staff report or the developer comments on this, it's like, well, this is kind of consistent with what we were planning on doing, which is not exactly what our statute says. So if we're going to do PUDs and SPUDs, I suggest sort of at a minimum that we need to change the way that we do staff reports, and the staff report should report to you the sort of like deal that was cut. Here's how we negotiated with this developer to get something cool in return for not having them use one of the regular zoning possibilities. And also, I think it would be really nice if, if the developer, the developer, you know, presentations included, here's how we understand the deal in return for getting this sort of special kind of consideration, here's what's cool. I, I don't even know if that could be done on this particular thing, maybe so. I mean, it seems like there were moves made in that direction. But I think in terms of just following our own ordinance, we should be in the position where everybody in the public understands what the special deal is. Why is there special permission being given? Because there's something special about the development. And I think we've moved away from that because we're, we don't want to redo our zoning code, so maybe we should get on that too. But, but I do think that just procedurally, it'd be nice if we at least treated this like our ordinances talk about PUDs. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other final comment from council or from the audience on this item? Okay. Come on down. Yes.
Sorry, I thought I signed up for this one.
I signed up for the next one.
Oh, well, it'll be the same speech. Marguerite Larson, Ward six. I have a real problem with this. I agree with what Steve Ellis has said. Every time a PUD comes through, we're endangering our environment, we're putting things through here, they're talking about a pond that they could save, that it's going to be fine, but what about while they're building all of this stuff? What's going on behind Norman North? How is this going to affect the Norman, the Norman North kids? What if Norman North would like to expand their high schools sometime? Now they can't do that because we have a PUD. So I just really am opposed to this. I just think that carte blanche needs to stop. Thanks.
Thank you. One else? Mr. Rieger, or Councilmember Grant?
If direct, uh, Planning Director Jane Hudson wouldn't mind speaking to some things? Hi. Could you tell us where we are in our process of doing our zoning and subreg updates, and how long the community can expect that process to take?
So we went through the selection process. We do not have a contract yet. We are in the middle of waiting to find out if I get our, our funding. So, but we did go through the RFP process, and we selected a consultant, and we just have to wait to get the contract and get the funding for that. I mean, we're hopeful it could be the first of the year that we would get started, and then they're looking about an 18 to 20 more, 24-month process.
Is the government shutdown affecting the dispersment of our grant funding?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
So out of our control. And then, to speak to what we're getting special here, as I understand it, it's mixed-use development, and it is in the vein of what AIM Norman envisioned for this area.
Absolutely. You know, another thing that we're getting is this park area, you know, the trail going around, the, the water feature there. I mean, to me, that would be a huge amenity if we could get that. That would not only be for this area, but you've got several other residential developments in this area that they could utilize this walking trail. But yes, it's, we're getting the, the mixed-use, we, we have the opportunity to get a senior housing opportunity as well, located here on Porter, you know, just a mildly short walk to the south. You've got services that these individuals could utilize.
And do we see in the future, until we get our zoning and subregs updated to reflect what we want to see as outlined by our AIM Norman Plan, that we probably will be continuing to use the PUD and SPUD process to realize these developments?
Councilmember Grant, I would say it's going to be mixed. We've got a couple items that are going to be coming forward in the next few months that have actually requested straight zoning for a commercial use. But when you're looking at developments, whether, I mean, this is, you know, what, 69 acres, I think, the opportunities to get the mixed develop, mixed use in there, we don't have, I mean, again, our code is old, so we've got to, you know, updo the code, but we don't really have an opportunity to, to have those mixed uses with, within a development like this without going forward and having a commercial in this small area, residential in this small area. So you would end up with, you know, a, a pattern of all these different developments. So I, I, I think it's going to be mixed. I, I think they'll continue to, to see areas that could come forward with straight zoning, and, and they will utilize that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rieger?
Yeah.
Would you just kind of address that about, from your client's perspective, why not develop under the existing zoning? You don't have to come to city council and go through the whole process.
Yeah, you know, this, this audience member keeps coming up and telling you this, and it's really a misnomer. They keep telling you that PUDs shouldn't be used. Well, let's talk about the implications of that then. On your code, right now, you have C1, C2, C3. None of them allow for residential. Can't be done. You can't be put residential on any one of those zoning districts. So that's zone C2 right now. So AIM Norman, and almost, by, by, almost every council meeting or planning commission meeting I hear in the last many years has asked for mixed use and interconnectivity of these uses. We don't have a zoning code that allows for that at all. So how are you going to do that without it being a PUD? For some reason, this audience members think that a PUD is a terrible thing. It's not. It actually is to your benefit. For one thing, it does, is locks in the site plan. If it's open district zoning, that developer can go build anything they want with any site plan they want, in any way they want, with any fences they want, with any trails they want, anything. And if you want to give us that, developers tend to like that, right? So what you're not hearing is all of the control you get with a PUD. And most cities love that. They love the control they get with a PUD, because they lock in the site plan, they lock in pages of a zoning code that's, that's customized to that site plan, to that development. With open district, you have a paragraph about that long. That's it. That's the only control you have over the whole development under open district zoning, as we call it. You have area intensity requirements that are about that long on one page. That's it. With a PUD, you have, I think, 10 pages requirements. So it's really being completely mischaracterized, in my opinion, as to what a PUD is and the value you get out of a PUD. It's pretty significant. It's really quite tremendous. And again, what you get here is mixed use, which there is nothing in the zoning code that allows us to do that, basically. RM6 does not allow commercial. So you have RM2, RM6, and RM4, which I think is mobile homes, RM4 I think is a mobile homes. You have R3, R2, which are antiquated multifamily districts. None of those multifamily districts allow commercial at all. So if we went straight zoning RM6 under straight zoning code and did not do a PUD, I couldn't put so much as a one-counter coffee shop in our RM6 area. It would be illegal. So what's being described to you to say, oh, we've got to basically build Disneyland or something, I hate, I think I heard the word wow, is a complete misrepresentation of what is expected from a PUD, I think. But two, completely misrepresents the benefits you get from a PUD in that we can actually do developments like this. We cannot do that development under open district zoning. Absolutely illegal, absolutely disallowed, it is not possible. So I don't know what else you would do to meet AIM Norman, which you just spent two and a half million dollars telling us what you wanted. This meets it. Your open district code makes it impossible. So I hope that answers your question.
Okay. And then, thank you. The question about, or comment about the impact to Norman Public Schools property, my understanding you're not interfering with their property, you're not, they're on the other side of the pond.
None whatsoever, there's no...
And they might do a trail project but have it committed to doing their side.
Correct, correct. A public school district has the right eminent domain condemnation. If they wanted to buy this property, they could through condemnation, I don't think. The school district has any plans or ideas of doing that that I'm aware of, but we have no impact on the neighboring property, be it the school district, the other neighbors, we don't own those properties, they don't own our property, and so they're completely separate discussions.
Okay, thank you. Is there any final questions, comments from council about this item? Yeah, Councilmember Bruce?
An educational thing for me related to PUD, so it, it sounds like there is a little bit of give and take between the builder and, and city staff on what, what is that PUD? And is that give and take in a PUD memorandum? Is it, you know, like a pricing memorandum, is it in a PUD memorandum?
Absolutely, Councilmember, and, and I look forward to hopefully meeting with you.
That's kidding, yeah.
As I think your colleagues can all tell you what those meetings go like with, with us, and this is the document. It is a lengthy document, and it's in your agenda. If you look at page, got to put my glasses on to look at the number, but if you look at page nine, 986, you see basically a lengthy document that is the PUD. And this PUD goes back and forth between applicant develops it, the applicant writes it, and about every PUD that comes through the system, I think, follows a template that basically everybody follows, that staff likes us to follow. And we go back and forth with staff pretty fervently sometimes. To be candid, we appreciate staff, both of, all of them, as I'm looking at Ms. Hudson and Mr. Sturts. We go back and forth with them pretty extensively, not just on the PUD, which is the zoning aspect of this. The zoning is the uses, the, the land uses and the, the sort of character of the development. And then with engineering, the civil engineering goes back and forth with Mr. Sturts and his department, and utilities as well. Back and forth for weeks, sometimes months, as to develop this document and the engineering documents to meet city standards. Ms. Hudson and her staff basically presses us to do some things differently that we've developed or proposed, and it is a back and forth, pretty significantly back and forth, red lines back and forth with staff over the course of weeks. I'm probably telling you more than you want to know, but when you file a zoning, the first thing that happens is called the DRT meeting, the Development Review Team Meeting, that happens with Mr. Sturts and his staff, but the entire city body basically of, of department heads and, and different components attend that meeting, and that's the first look. And they will give us a lengthy list of, oh, you should do this, this, and this. Then we get into the PUD document going back and forth, civil engineer gets into his documents going back and forth, and it's a process that takes many weeks back and forth of redlining to come to this document that then goes to, if there's residential component, it goes to the Parks Board for their vote, and then Plan Commission reviews it, and then you review it. And so it goes through that gauntlet of a process to get to where we are tonight. If that answers your question.
It does. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading, I mean, second reading passes unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Okay. Item number 42, a preliminary plat for 2020 North Porter Avenue, a planned unit development located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Porter Avenue and Rock Creek Road. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Motion.
Second.
This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none. Are there any further public comments? Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item?
We have Stephen Ellis and Marguerite Larson.
Stephen Ellis, still Ward four. I just, I just wanted to say again, on the sort of general issue of this approval of a PUD, that what I'm really asking for isn't, is not that no PUDs happen. As a matter of fact, I was just looking through some of my emails from 2017. It turns out I am really the father of the SPUD ordinance, because I wanted to make sure that we were doing PUDs right, and the city council back in the day was adopting PUDs that were smaller than was legally required. So I got in contact with Carol Dillingham, who was at the court, you know, working as an attorney for the district attorney, and I think she was leaning on council to like legalize what they were doing, which is fine by me. It seems to me that there's really a decent reason for having a PUD ordinance, I just think we should follow it. So the procedures should be one where what happens in the PUD is made clear in the staff report and at the city council. So if someone wants to say, hey, we have to do this because of blah, 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 that it's written down, and that that's part of what the discussion is, rather than, because, because if I hadn't have made any comment tonight, there wouldn't have been any discussion about what was special here. There would have been an observation that this was consistent with AIM, and you guys might have known that there were negotiations going on, but the public really wouldn't have known. If you go back and look at most of the PUD approvals, it's pretty much, hey, can we have this? Sure, why not, right? And I think it's important for the public to understand what is being negotiated over, and if a big part of the negotiation is, you know, we, we can't do what our plan says with our current zoning, that should be a spur for you to fix the zoning. And until we get to that point, we should have a discussion that's very explicit about what pluses and minuses of these proposals are. I mean, it might well be that you guys know, but it's certainly not the case that it shows up in any of the documentation before it gets here. Somebody has to ask for it special, which is what I'm doing, but I'm also suggesting, don't make me ask. Go ahead, write it down someplace, and ask the developer to make it clear during the presentation why they're asking for what they're asking, because that's the way the ordinance is written. Thanks.
Thank you.
Marguerite?
Short and sweet, same verse, second. Second verse, same song. Don't make it carte blanche. Think about what you're doing to our environment before you say okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other final comment from anybody else on this item? Hasn't spoken? Okay. All right. Are there any final comments from council? Seeing none. The motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
All right. Miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to the Open Meetings Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole and limited to less. And I would note too, that this is your warning about the rules, if you don't... If you don't follow them, the mic will be turned off.
Mayor, we'll start with David Cannard.
Counsel, and thanks for letting me speak first. Hey, I received a letter a couple of weeks ago about expanding Lindsay between Berry and Elm, I believe. And, um, one of the parts of the expansion is going to be a turn lane, a left turn lane on Chautauqua. When calling city traffic to explain what the purpose of this was, was basically to fundamentally to push more cars through campus and allow more cars to pass through campus. OU is planning to increase enrollment to forty thousand students. Now, if kids are like they were when I was in college, in the morning you go to class, you come back for lunch. In the afternoon, you go to class, you come back for lunch. At night, you go to the library or do whatever you do. And so, you know, it's potentially, you know, forty thousand students times six trips or a quarter million pedestrian trips across Lindsay. At the time, same time, the city has prioritized pushing more traffic through Lindsay. Now, it sounds sort of like a recipe for disaster. And, um, just to remind you that, you know, Norman is not really very good at enforcing the, the rules of the road. And as a, someone who both as a pedestrian and as someone who rides a bicycle is really obvious of, you know, infractions that go unpunished. Part of this, um, you know, Norman refused to use AI and cameras in order to ticket people for not following the rules of the road, showing our lax interest of, you know, protecting pedestrians and cyclists. So, and of course, you know, shed ewens, which is a very sad story that I hope you guys still remember. You know, I think there's lots better ways. Oh, and also, going to the academic side, there's the argument of induced demand, that this is gonna solve nothing. You know, you're not gonna, you can't make Lindsay wide enough to satisfy the number of cars that want to go to the OU football games. So, you know, just this week in The Economist, it was an interesting article about how the fastest growing means of transportation in cities in the world are bicycles. Bicycles, not robot cars or anything like that. And having a brother who lives in Boston, I've seen actually on Massachusetts Avenue, which goes from Harvard Square to the Bay, where they have protected bicycle lanes, and the count of bicycles at times exceeds that of the count of cars that traffic on that. So, I would just like for you guys, this, coming up with this plan to widen Lindsay, apparently is seven or eight years old. You know, we went through, um, the small, the, um, strong towns exercise, and I think the world has sort of changed their mind on exactly, you know, the priority of pushing cars through pedestrian-heavy areas. And I wish you guys, before you start tearing up the hot, the road, think about this really good and hard. And that's it. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Trey Kirby.
Trey Kirby, Ward five. I was just coming to talk about free speech a little bit, because over the last six weeks, I've watched a lot go on with one of the council members and something they said. Uh, we got a lot of people casting stones from a glass house. We had another senator in this town who committed twenty felonies, and I don't see nobody in that particular area saying anything about that, which is a lot worse than somebody expressing their free speech. I also would like to address that maybe you, as the mayor and the council, should check into how you can limit speech or not limit speech. There's a town in Florida where they tried to throw somebody out for free speech, and that's the one thing our First Amendment does protect us from, is the government trying to control our speech. So it cost that town over a hundred thousand dollars. So trying to control who people address is not okay, because that's exactly what cost that town a hundred thousand dollars. So whether I agree with what these children are about to get up here and do, or the way that they're gonna bully a woman over her right to free speech, don't matter none. You need to look into that case in Florida and find out that it could cost this town a hundred thousand dollars, and I think we're already broken enough. So we don't need to be telling people how they can speak, because as a government, you have no control over citizens and free speech. Just like the children that are about to get up here and try to, once again, bully a person, sticks and stones will break your bones, but words will never hurt you. She has a right to say whatever she wants, whether you like it or not, tough crap. Don't be a chicken shit and bully people.
John Skamihorn.
Good evening. The Adult Wellness and Education Center, AKA the Senior Center in Norman, is now celebrating its second anniversary and is one of the great successes in our city. It allows exercise, lunch, games, and fellowship. It's easy to get immersed in a loneliness when you are elderly. I go to the center almost every day, and for exercise and for lunch. I've made many friends, and we do things outside of the center. It gives us a social network and, and we're of a feeling of a family. I am reminded, when I meet with these friends, of these are the people who built Norman, come from all sorts of backgrounds, and the reason that we have the wealth that we do now. So, we have, um, everything from teachers to truck drivers, to construction workers, to, um, doctors, professors. These are, all make up the elderly now, but back when they were younger, they were productive. Many of these people rely on mass transportation. And this, when I started going to the center, uh, this became clear to me. One of the discussions was, we don't have a bus stop here, and we used to, uh, some, a few years ago. So the bus stop disappeared. And many of these people have a terrible time getting there without mass transit. Now, I am lucky enough to still be able to drive and to have a car, but I've seen some friends there deteriorate, and eventually, somebody has to take their car keys from them. And eventually, that will be me. And I won't have access to my car, and will have to rely on mass transit. So I have a personal stake in it, if, hopefully, a long time from now. So, added bus stops, I think are gonna be critical in helping this most vulnerable members of our society, the elderly. There's an associated issue that we've discussed in this meeting, and that is the restrooms in the transit centers. Elderly people need restrooms. Uh, and so, without restrooms, a lot of them will just stay home. And they will be sentenced to be sitting alone at home if they can't get out. So I would encourage you to make a priority, these issues related to the use of mass transit, specifically for the elderly. And just keep that in mind when you're setting priorities. Yes, thank you.
Steve Ellis, Ward four. Uh, I don't have the opportunity to agree with Professor Skamihorn very often, but here we go. Uh, I think we need a senior center bus stop. That makes perfect sense to me. There used to be one right there. I don't know what happened to it. Uh, I think it belongs on the embark. And a big heck yes to, uh, having restrooms at the transit center. Uh, I think it's important for lots of people in Norman to have access to, uh, to restrooms, and I think that's true for, uh, a lot of people housed and unhoused. So I think it's really important that we get on that and figure out how to do that. Uh, second issue, uh, I wanna drop a footnote in the discussion about the Ward three council member replacement committee that we did earlier. So there, not to have, this doesn't really have anything to do with the discussion we have earlier, other than to note, uh, that there was a, a weird asymmetry in the discussion of the issue earlier, uh, by one of the committee members on that committee. And in particular, it had to do with the way that the current council member was referred to in that discussion as Mr. Bruce, Councilmember Bruce now. Uh, and the, the person, uh, who was being discussed in the same, uh, you know, by the same person, who is consistently referred to by her first name only. Uh, and I have to say, I found that a little bit worrisome, and I think it reflects in a worrisome way on the way that, uh, Norman councils sometimes conduct themselves. Uh, I will note that, again, somebody I don't agree with very often, but the chair of that committee, um, did better, at least I think, because he was at least willing to use the honorific Miss, uh, for Ms. Hall. And if she's willing to go by that, that's fine by me. Uh, but I do think that's not the first time there's been that kind of respect asymmetry that we've seen, uh, from Norman official committees. And I think Robert's Rules has a really good discussion about the importance of using official titles and that sort of thing in these sorts of public spheres, because I think it really helps us sort of all stay on track. I, I guess the final thing that I wanted to say is that, um, my, my understanding was that there was, uh, gonna be a re- repeat of the, the discussion that we had two weeks ago, where a group came to sort of inflame you against one of your colleagues uh, by misinterpreting what they said. And I think you wisely, at that time, uh, declined to jump to any conclusions and decided to let the Ward four voters choose their own council member. Uh, and I can't see any reason why you would want to change that tonight. But, uh, you know, maybe, maybe that's not gonna happen tonight. And I anticipated that it would, so I figured I'd say something, but if it doesn't, that's fine by me. A- actually, one last thing. I was gonna add this, I have forty seconds left, why not? Um, I wanna offer a, a, a reading recommendation to everyone. The Pope Leo just put out an apostolic exhortation, probably not the kind of thing that you're used to reading. Uh, but it's, it, it's not just directed at people who are Catholics or Christian. And I think it's a really, really interesting take, perspective, on how we should understand our less fortunate neighbors. Uh, if you're not familiar with it, it's worth just having a quick read. It's actually a really short document, so, uh...
Thank you.
Hold on, sorry, lost my place. Rita Jones. Marguerite Larson.
Marguerite Larson, Ward six. So really what I wanted to, to say is that, um, Redder Collective is taking monetary donations in response to the SNAP participants who may be losing their benefits. So at this point, that's what we're doing, is taking monetary donations. We are gonna be, we anticipate giving our first food away on November the second. And after that, we may very well have a drop-off if you would like to donate food, but at this time, we are asking for monetary donations. So if you guys can spare a few bucks, we got you. Thank you.
Bill Hutzel.
Bill Hutzel, Ward five. I want to speak tonight about the need to update our city's council ethics code, section two dash one oh three. So it reflects today's standards for public behavior, especially on social media. Over the past few months, we've, we've seen troubling online behavior from council members that drew damaging national attention to our city. Because of the positions these officials hold, their words and actions don't just reflect on themselves, they reflect on all of Norman. Our community's reputation, built over decades as a place of fairness, compassion, and integrity, was called into question on a national stage. When I read section two dash one oh three, most of it focuses on financial conflicts, gifts, and the misuse of private information. Those are important, but they were written before social media became such a big part of public life. The only part about behavior says council members must conduct themselves so as to be, to bring credit upon the city, setting an example of good ethical conduct for all citizens. That line is important, but it is too general for the challenges we face today. I understand concerns about freedom of speech, and I respect that. Every elected official has a right to express personal opinions, even unpopular ones. But freedom of speech is not freedom from accountability. Public office brings not just rights, but responsibilities. When a council member uses their position to insult others, mock tragedy, or spread cruelty online, it doesn't just reflect on that person, it reflects on all of Norman. We cannot and should not stop anyone from speaking, but we can set clear expectations for how our representatives communicate while in office. Cities in Oklahoma and across the country have rules or social media policies that set clear standards for professionalism and respect. These policies do not censor speech, they guide behavior and help maintain public trust. So tonight, I'm asking this council to act, not to punish, but to prevent. I am requesting that the city form a citizens' task force to review and update section two dash one oh three. To maintain public trust, the task force should include representatives from each ward, reflect a variety of community perspectives, and use a transparent application process. The goal should be, add clear language about ethical conduct on social media and other public platforms, define expectations for respectful and professional communication, and set clear steps for how the city will handle violations of these standards. Updating this code isn't about politics, it's about integrity, leadership, and respect for people you serve. Norman deserves leaders who lift the tone of public conversation, not lower it. Our community is compassionate, fair, and thoughtful. I hope our city's ethics codes and the actions of this council reflect those same values. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Williams.
Good evening, Scott Williams, Ward four. I've got a couple of issues I'd like to briefly address. Um, I was in the last city council meeting, and I was appalled that the meeting was hijacked by a radical rightist religious group. Uh, they turned the meeting into their church service, and it had nothing to do with official city business. I was also appalled that they attacked a city council member by name with threatening language. And I don't understand why they were allowed to continue to do this repeatedly even after they were, were warned to stop. Uh, how can this be permitted? Again, I don't see how it had anything to do with city council business. Uh, second issue is the center turn lane. Uh, that was previously, previously discussed about Lindsay. I think we definitely need that. It is not going to bring more car, uh, traffic through campus, but it will allow a smoother flow of that traffic and will allow people to turn into the, uh, side streets of La Homa, et cetera, and Chautauqua. And I think this is long overdue, and we'd really like to see that center turn lane. Uh, next, uh, point is also about, uh, traffic and transportation on our streets. I'm wondering when Norman is going to sequence its traffic lights. The lights at the intersections operate independently of one another instead of in unison. Uh, secondary roads are given priority over primary roads with green light on-demand sensors. That is when, uh, from a secondary road, a car drives up to the intersection, it is noticed, and then the light will turn green for the secondary road. is noticed, and then the light will turn green for the secondary road, uh, with a red or stoplight for the primary road. Um, I think everybody has experienced this. Um, often, when I drive through Norman, I'll hit every single red light going through. This increases the time it takes to get through Norman. Uh, motorists, while they're stopped, then have an opportunity to get distracted by their cell, cell phones or anything else. And when the light turns green, they're just sitting there because they're looking at their cellphone, so there's not an expedited flow of traffic. It decreases fuel efficiency for all vehicles, and it increases localized pollution because cars are sitting there idling. Uh, so I wonder when Norman's traffic management can be brought into the twenty-first century? It's not that difficult, again, to sequence the, the green lights so that when a car or when the traffic is following, uh, traffic speeds as allowed, will be able to drive through Norman. Again, expedites it, saves time, uh, increases fuel efficiency, and decreases, uh, pollution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diana Hutzel.
Diana Hutzel, Ward Five. So I, I don't want to beat the horse, uh, continued horse of court of record, but I, I will say that population and the dynamics of that will eventually drive us to be a court of record. One thing I would add on the not being a court of record, when a case is appealed that was done in municipal court to, uh, district court, because it didn't have an official transcript, because we're not a court of record, the trial is de novo, which means it starts over. So everybody has to pay for everything over again. Anyway, but the reason why I'm here for tonight for this part is that during the last city council meeting, I spoke in support of entering into a contract with the Cleveland County Economic Development Coalition as a forward-looking investment in Norman's economic future. And after some questions were raised about the partnership, I reached out for, um, City Manager Pyle for insight, and he's not here tonight, but I wanted to thank him for taking the time to speak with me last week, and, uh, if he's watching, I apologize again for making you late to dinner that night, after talking to me on the phone. Um, it was reassuring to learn that over the many years that our city has partnered with this organization, the city had access to financial information such as bank statements, asset reports, and income statements, all of which were deemed satisfactory. It was also encouraging to learn that for most of that time, a member of city staff actually served on the organization's board, adding an extra level of transparency and accountability. With City Manager's clarification that there are no outstanding issues that would prevent awarding future contracts to the Cleveland County Economic Development Coalition, I stand by my original recommendation. We need business development that provides new, more diversified sales tax revenue, and we need to look seriously at our city's expenditures. I know that I've beaten this drum more than once. We are keenly aware that our city experienced a $5.8 million deficit last year. This year, we face an even larger $7.2 million shortfall, and those numbers don't yet reflect the added uncertainty and economic ripple effects of what is now already a twenty-eight-day federal government shutdown. Norman is home to many federal employees, retirees, and veterans, and roughly seventeen percent of our residents live below the poverty line. Economic uncertainty hits them first and hardest. Homelessness is also a pressing concern for Norman. This year's point-in-time count recorded 213 homeless individuals, yet Norman Police Department's 2025 arrest summaries list over 640 homeless individuals through the end of September. These figures suggest the true scope of homelessness in Norman is significantly higher. As many residents struggle with housing instability and do not, they do not appear in official counts, so it may be larger. Partnering with the Co- Cleveland County Economic Development Coalition gives Norman a professional, regional, connected team to attract new employers, support existing businesses, and expand our tax base. By fostering business growth and creating good-paying jobs, we can strengthen city services and provide pathways out of poverty and homelessness. For these reasons, I urge council to support this partnership and help secure a stronger, more resilient economic future for Norman. And as a reminder, I have nothing to do with that coalition, I'm not a member or employee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Nanny.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? All right. Oh, okay, that might be easier. All right, I'm Chris Nanny, Ward One, and thank you to John and Steve for starting the discussion. And thank you to Ms. Hook, uh, earlier this evening, for reminding us about mobility and how important it is. And I just wanted to call to your attention that we're leaving out a large segment of our population in, um, making their mobility easier. And we're leaving them out because we don't have a bus stop. We had a bus stop several years ago, close to the Wellness Center. I don't know what happened to it. I think when they rerouted some of the buses, it disappeared, but we need it back. It breaks my heart every time I hear one of my friends at the Wellness Center come in and say that they had to walk seven-tenths of a mile from the nearest bus stop. The nearest bus stop is on the other side of the former hospital on Porter Avenue. And really, it, it, it brings me to tears, because I see these people struggling to get to the front door. They can't drive, they don't qualify for Embark Plus, so they're in this gray area. They can still walk, they can still, you know, technically get from a bus stop to the front door, but these folks can't do it. And so many of them are choosing to just stay home. And they want to get to the Wellness Center, they want to exercise, they want to meet with their friends, like John said, they want to come to lunch, you know? Many of these people are pillars of Norman. And they built this city, and they waited for ten years to get this beautiful Wellness Center built. It's a beautiful building. We have three thousand members, paying members, who are there almost every day, taking classes, you know, doing all kinds of things, volunteering. These are active members in our community, but we're hampering their ability to get around just because we don't have a bus stop. I mean, please, how difficult is it, you know, to put a bench there, put a sign up? Yeah, you might have to reroute one of the buses. I ride the Embark Plus almost every day. I talk to the bus drivers about this. The drivers themselves say, yeah, we can do that, we could do that, no problem. We could come down Finley, we could, you know, there's no, there's no reason not to do it. So I don't know what the holdup is, we've been waiting for two years, we're gonna be celebrating our second anniversary there at the Wellness Center. I'm a founding member, I'm very involved in all aspects of the programming. It just, it just pains me to see these people not come just because they can't get to the front door. And, you know, and we, we've actually been out there, and we've walked the walk that they do. They, they're going uphill, they're on rough sidewalks, they have to walk through the old hospital complex, which is, you know, rough pavement, uneven, they're trying to do this with walkers and canes, they're worried about falling. They get stuck in the middle of lanes of traffic, they get stuck on the island, they end up trying to walk on the grass, which is even worse. We've, we've tried to map out other routes, I think we came, we came up with three different walking routes from the existing bus stop, and none of them are good, especially in bad weather, especially when it's raining, or snowing, or icy, or windy. I mean, it, it's just, it's almost impossible to get from where the bus drops them off.
Thank you very much.
Vivian Andrews.
Good evening, I am Vivian Andrews, Ward Four, and I am a transplant here in Norman. And I come here with great grief in my heart this evening. I have been a domestic violence, um, victim for several years. So when I came to Norman, I was fleeing a really horrible situation. And some of the things that was occurring, um, for example, breaking into my home, um, busting the windows out of my home, busting the windows out of my vehicle, um, damaged property, so you get the picture. Since I've been in Norman, in 2022 is when I moved here, fleeing this vicious person, I have had the same behavior occurring again and again. For example, the first property that I moved at was 909 Brandywine, Apartment 126. The thievery begun again. Did I call the police? Yes, first thing that I did was call the police. Secondly, I got a security camera to try and resolve it that way. No resolve, they would sabotage the security camera, move from there to 1300 Crown Point, same behavior, only escalation. Right now, I'm at 2410 Westbrook Street Apartment Five. Purchased a electric bike for exercising, over $600, broke into my home, stole my bicycle, might as well say it that way, because flattened the tires, stole the battery that you need to charge the bike, sabotaged my computer, they're even still in my underwear. That's how, you know, deprived of morality these people are. So I'm at a loss of what to do. Like I said, I've called the police, they can verify, they have several reports. And I'm hoping that there is some compensation fund that the city of Norman have for people of domestic violence, because I certainly qualify. And I can't take it anymore. I took Embark down here, I usually don't even like to be out this late, but because this has gotten so bad, it is so serious, I don't know what else to do. I have called the police, I have done that several times, but I've never been before the city council before. So I'm desperately in need of help. So I'm asking you today to please do what you can to help me get out of this situation, because no one should have to endure this type of behavior. And I'm thinking that this person has some close relatives here in Norman. I can't run anymore, because I'm finding out, the more I run, the more they follow. And if I'm seeing the same behavior in a different state, then there has to be something that can be done differently. I don't know the contacts that you have, but for the record, my name is Vivian Andrews, my telephone number is four oh five, two one nine, seven four zero six. I gave you my current address, I've given you some previous addresses. I have a P.O. box here in Norman, seven two one six four one, Norman, Oklahoma, seven three zero, seven two...
Mayumi Windler.
Hello, uh, Mayumi Windler, Ward Two. Okay, first thing, when I was, um, getting steps outside, um, ceiling tiles have, uh, they've been stained, so are there leaks in the roof? Just a question. Um, I don't want this building to become like, you know, the library and get molded and, or, you know, get moldy and icky, so if that could get taken care of or looked at somehow, that would be great. Okay, next thing. So I'm wondering, for the unhoused population, do you have any way of counting people who are just living in their cars? Um, I know, you know, you can track the people who are going to shelters, but what about people, yeah, they're living in their cars, or, you know, they park in random parking lots and hopefully find a safe space? And is that even a thing that we consider? So, you know, one of the previous speakers was talking about the point-in-time count versus arrest records, and how that is so very different. And so I'm wondering if that's part of it, that, you know, maybe they're not, like, completely homeless, at least they have some shelter and a vehicle, but it's still not great. Um, yeah, I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
I apologize if I messed up this next one, I have a hard time reading it, I think it's Barry Bender. Sheryl Ann Densow.
Sheryl Ann Densow, uh, properties in, uh, Ward Four and Six. And, um, uh, first of all, I wanted to talk about the, um, resolutions tonight. Um, I think it's kind of disingenuous when we have resolutions for October, and there's only three more days left in October, they should have been done earlier in the month. Just a thought on that. There were three resolutions that, um, were proclamations, I'm sorry, the three proclamations that were done late in the month, I'm sorry, I said resolutions, they were proclamations. Um, it should have been done earlier in the month, so that is an administrative thing that needs to be corrected, as far as I'm concerned, um, when there's only three days left in October, and we're supposed to be celebrating, um, those three proclamations. Um, so I want to know why, why, why did that happen? Um, secondly, um, I, I'm noticing a lot of sidewalks to nowhere going in Norman. Um, a lot of money is spent on sidewalks, Lisa Krieg says they're extraordinarily expensive, and yet we got sidewalks that are going up Flood Street along the, um, the, uh, west side of Flood. It's not really a major business district, it's along the airport. We have sidewalks going all the way up 12th Street, basically from Griffin, and they're really oversized, they're about five foot wide. Um, spend a lot of money on sidewalks going nowhere. Who's using the sidewalks? You know, who's using them? Cyclists? Okay, well, um, personally, I drive that way all the time, and I've seen no cyclists going that way, I'm just saying. Um, but that's a lot of money expended when we don't have much money to expend, okay? Um, the other one is the resolution number thirty-eight, that's on the, that, that y'all passed, that was using TSET money for, uh, for a, uh, north side of Highway Nine between Eighty-Fourth and Ninety-Sixth Street, um, sidewalk, I'm assuming. Correct? Between Eighty-Fourth and Ninety-Sixth Street along Highway Nine on the north side. I'm very familiar with this neighborhood, have friends out that way, kept horses out that way. Again, who's using that piece of sidewalk? And finally, the city auditor resignation. Very bad luck for Norman, extremely bad no- look for Norman, to have this young woman forced out of our city because she happened to be doing her job very well. And I can only assume that this was orchestrated by the person on council that has been in, on council for the last twelve years. that has been in, on council for the last 12 years. You know, the citizens voted to have this city audited, so there was fiscal responsibility. You didn't like what she found. Well, God bless us. I hope we can do better.
Chelsea Gravel.
Good evening, Council, Chelsea Gravel, Ward four. I also want to speak about our city auditor. We as citizens, our vote in this city does not matter. I have seen that time and time again where our council takes upon a decision upon themselves and goes against the vote of the people. And it has come to our attention as the people that this is to be expected of you. So of course, a vote of the people means nothing. A vote for a city auditor means nothing. Of course, my own council member won't even look at me while I'm up here talking because that's the city we live in, is there's just absolute disrespect in this city from you guys, and that is not okay. Not in any way, shape, or form. I know you want to show us your best sides and citizens are not making this easy because yes, we do expect more from you than the average person. But you are representing us. There is only you representing all of Norman. You're representing OU, you're representing all of the council before you. We've had problems from mayors, from council, we all know their names if we've listened to anything, and I'm shocked that all this went on. I've lived here my whole life. I'm 34 years old last Thursday. I have lived here my entire life and I didn't know any of this was going on. When I got involved, it was because I had somebody climb over my back fence. I live seven blocks from here and it took our police 15 minutes. Why? Because they thought it was a homeless man. This man was huge, he was jacked to the nines. This man lifted weights and was massive and held himself on my fence for five minutes. He had a backpack full of drugs, he had a backpack, he had a large knife that he threw on the ground, and the police took that into evidence whenever he threw that over my fence. And here I am, three years later, being a pain in your butt. And I will probably always be that because like our lady who was just here who spoke about being sexually assaulted and running from people, you didn't listen. You didn't listen to me at neighborhood meetings. My own council member yelled at me with her fists at our sides in a council meeting in front of three police officers. I've had time after time, problem after problem. And once again, with our city auditor, it just proves one thing. You are hiding things. You fire the H R department director in place of her. Oh, is this because she found that you were reloading your credit cards with fancy meals and wine and DoorDash? Yeah. Is it because she found out that the police department? Of course, I see some eye rollings and laughing. The police department was going in, they had all of their keys stolen. They had to go in and remake all of their police keys. I know that you're rolling your eyes, you can check into that every, oh, no, we don't direct comments right now. I know you've answered, but don't worry about that. Our police, credit cards were being reloaded. We had every single person in the Department of Norman were able to go in and have keys made for the buildings. And that was put a stop to because of our city auditor. Our city auditor found problems with food and shelter and that would not have happened if there hadn't been a gas leak that I brought up to council in November of the year that that happened. That was nothing on me. That was because of Russell Rice getting up here saying that the police hadn't been called all month and I was looking at the police report in my lap in that moment and said, there, there's been seven calls and I'm only on day four. She has found things our city has been hiding for 20 years. And I'm hoping that we don't leave this position open. And I understand that you guys will be her new boss, his, whoever. So we won't have the accountability that I'm hoping for. But I don't think that your secrets can stay hidden much longer. And I certainly don't think they're going to stay hidden with all of the eyes of our city on what's going on right now. Thank you for your time.
Carlin de Gravel.
When does it start? Carlin de Gravel, Ward four. Congratulations, Councilmember, Ward three. Robert Bruce, I haven't met yet, look forward to an opportunity to do that. Noticed a kind gesture from my council member to council member Bruce. I was, really had a warm heart there when she reached over to help him. Never seen a kind gesture from that direction yet, so. I would like to take a moment and talk with everyone in the room on camera up on the dice that we have a lot of hope today. I have not met this council member, I've seen no activity of this council member on any social media, public platforms, snickering behind someone's back over at some corner of city council. But I do have a lot of hope that maybe going forward, we will have some decent representation. Let me take a moment to tell you what we see, okay? Because I don't think you see it from our side and you think things are a certain way when they're not. When we see you talking with someone else on public platforms, it's as if you're on the dices and we are out in the audience on the camera or we are out here, we see you, okay? And it matters. Why? Because you might be being really buddy-buddy with somebody who didn't represent us or who did things in our city that citizens lost all faith and rightfully so. Right? So when you're having normal flippant conversations, we see that. And when you say things like, when our city auditor found those 19 findings of the food and shelter industry, April Dosier, and when our council member of Ward seven says, maybe things will be better July 1st, April. Now, that was a 19 findings that was very, very important for the safety and sustainability and finances of our city. And what happened July 1st? We had some new council members seated. And when you say that, maybe it'll be better when I'm seated, honey. We lose faith in you. When you talk with a previous council member, we've had no dealings with our council member of Ward five, I'm excited that you got an unanimous placement. I haven't met you before either, I'm looking forward to meeting you. I did see a comment you made, thank you for that. But when you speak with a previous council member and you look forward to picking their mind, other people weren't represented by that council member. And when we see that, we think, oh no. Is he going to be in cahoots with her? Or is he going to represent everyone in his ward? Because we care too. So when we see our mayor answering questions, we love that. We love honest answers from you. But when you only answer certain people on social media and you won't answer others, that doesn't, we don't get our trust in you. We see what questions and who it is. We know the histories of those, we know what's going on. We need you guys, we need you in this position. We care about our city too and we want representation and we want. I had some people come tonight and speak and I had not, I thought, who's going to say anything good about that? I mean, I mean, something, who could say anymore? And someone started speaking and I thought, gosh, I'm so glad they came. I wouldn't have even thought of that. Absolutely, that's a major point. We have a roundabout going in down here in Acres, I drive that street all the time. Please, please, please do a study. That is.
Dana Redden. Elaine Brown. Oh, you are, I'm sorry, we'll get you.
You guys hear me?
Yep, just a second.
Are you good now? Okay, thank you, guys. Last time I was here, I actually, my mic got cut off in a minute, a minute. I got a minute to speak. And I got told to come back when I was a Norman resident. And so the next day, I emailed a certain person on this council and I let them know that I was officially identifying as a Norman resident, as you can see on my shirt. Those are my new pronouns, I identify as a Norman resident. I would like to be addressed as a Norman resident today and future meetings too. So that shouldn't be a problem anymore, especially since Norman claims to be so inclusive. That shouldn't be a problem. So I respect, I would ask for you guys' respect on that situation. But I am still concerned because no action or no one has really spoken up about the particular councilwoman who, who celebrated the death of Charlie Kirk on social media and said some disgusting comments. No one on this council has had a backbone to say absolutely anything about that. No one, absolutely no one. And then I also want to make another point. I think last weekend, the Saturday before this past weekend was No King's Day. I saw that Norman had a protest for No King's Day, but unfortunately, that didn't work because Norman City Council still has a king at the helm right here. So that protest did not work whatsoever. That, that's unfortunate because I was hoping that that would move the needle here in Norman. You know, and to go back to my point about how Norman's supposed to be inclusive, they're not very inclusive about out-of-towners who come here and have some issues. Yeah, I may not, may not, you know, live here and pay property tax, but I pay to still drive on the roads, I pay to eat here when I stop here. I eat at your guys' restaurants, I fuel up here before I go back home. So I'm still, you know, putting my money into the city, whether you want to believe it or not. So my opinion does still matter. And, and that's why today I was proud, well, I was actually proud to send that email the next day to let the king know that I was officially identifying as a Norman resident. And I couldn't be more happier about that. I feel so relieved that I was able to do that today and really publicly address that, that I'm, you know, my new pronouns are Norman slash resident. So next time, next meeting, there shouldn't be any issues. Hopefully, you know, I gain a little more respect here because I'm not going away unfortunately. And so, but no, thank you, guys, God bless, thanks.
Okay, Cynthia, sorry.
Good evening, I guess on last, but hopefully not least, I'd like to welcome Mr. Bruce to council and all the fun. And I appreciate all of you because I know people want to micromanage how you act. So sorry about that. So I was looking at the monthly reports. You know, you learn a lot about what's going on at the city. And I wanted to make just a couple of not very connected points. One came up this evening about ballot fatigue. Mayor Holman mentioned that in terms of number of items on a ballot. But I think the ballot fatigue that we've had in Norman historically is having that one year we had seven or eight ballots, eight separate elections. And I think that's a very concerning ballot fatigue. And I was very encouraged to hear discussions about trying not to do that in the future. So I think, you know, we have a high IQ, we can figure out multiple items. I was also happy to hear about the discussion about the charter change amendments. I know three of these were from before that were brought up. The swearing in immediately after, or the first election after the April certification, I think is a grand idea, that's how the school district does it. Actual larger salaries, I think you guys need compensation. Longer terms, I think I'd like that, maybe I'm not sure about that one. But what I was most happy to hear about was TIF policy changes. I gave all of you a handout earlier, Mr. Bruce, you'll get your personal copy after the meeting. I was also looking at some of the budget figures, which I'm sure you're looking at, and boy, was I having a stomach ache here. Our general fund revenue is down a couple million below budget and usually it's a sales tax revenue that's killing us and that was only down 500,000. But our expenses were up 400,000. So anybody's math says that's sort of an issue for us. Now, we've always had this issue with structural budget changes, the, the gap. And, and we're not really doing what we need to address it. It's not because we don't have sales taxes. We have one of the biggest, most flourishing retail districts in the state. Part of the reason is because we don't fund growth appropriately. And I know there was a person up here before saying, oh, we need to do something, we need to join with C C E D C and do something about it. But I can give you a quote, "The most fundamental problem is that many public officials and citizens appear to believe that they can influence the course of their state or local economies through incentives and subsidies to agree, degree far beyond anything supported by even the most optimistic evidence." That's not from me, that's from some very prominent public finance scholars. You can't trick retail. But what we can do is be fiscally responsible in how we grow. And I know, you know, as we add new developments, we're adding new obligations. That was discussed earlier. And I know the Raft Ellis Report should be coming out soon and we need to look at that very carefully because that's going to tell us what, what we've known and what's contributing to our continued structural budget deficit is that growth is costing us more than it's producing in terms of our revenues. I was going to talk about Dan's book, but I'll leave that for.
All right, do I have to like say my name and stuff or? Do I have to like say my name and stuff or can I just? Grady Thompson. So first, I just wanted to extend a congratulations to Councilman Bruce. Second, I just wanted to extend thoughts and prayers to your son, terrible what happened. And I just wanted to make a few comments real quick. So as far as the bullying allegations, I don't really see that. This is just holding elected officials accountable for their actions. Elected officials are held to a higher standard for a reason. They're supposed to execute the will of the people. And I just ask those comments made by certain council members, was that the will of the people in your ward? I personally don't think so, but we'll see. And one more thing. It's obvious that the rules that were established are not being upheld. And I have multiple people have stated out council members by name and just not being upheld. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, thank you all, good night, God bless.
Hi, good evening, Audrey Day, Ward one. I'd like to talk about mass transit again a little bit. When I moved permanently to Norman two years ago, I bought a house at the intersection of 12th and Boyd with the understanding that there were two bus stops within about a five-minute walk of my home. Now, the closest bus stop is about a 13-minute walk, which disappointing for me, but I can walk 13 minutes and I own a car and I could get a bike if I wanted to. Additionally, I moved with the understanding about the bus stops on O U S campus being a little different than they are now. I really understand that this is a budget issue, that more stops cost more money. I don't necessarily want to advocate for us to bring back all of the bus stops that were taken away because I think they were a little bit excessive. There were two inside my neighborhood and I think there really only needed to be one or one outside of my neighborhood. But I understand there are a lot of elderly people in my neighborhood that almost were built in the 60s, there are a lot of original owners who cannot drive or choose not to drive and they really have no way of getting around at this point. I think we heard about that a lot of, the bus stops are just in the wrong places. Maybe we do have enough, but they're not, they're not in the right places for people to use them. There are a lot of bus stops that aren't next to residential areas. They're next to commercial areas that to me don't seem to get a lot of use or may, maybe within, would be better suited to put a bus stop near the residential areas and allow people to walk to these commercial areas. Or places like the seniors center, the wellness center, that see a lot of use by people with limited mobility. Additionally, bike lanes. I'm deeply afraid of riding a bike on Norman's roads because there are very few designated bike lanes and because of the amount of pedestrian traffic on the sidewalks, I don't necessarily feel like it's safe to use something like an e-bike on the sidewalks, even at a lower speed, because people get run over all the time by e-bikes and e-scooters because it's a college town full of college kids who ride recklessly. Basically, I would like us to maybe at some point consider where these bus stops are really necessary. I learned to ride the bus basically by myself at around 10 years old. I learned to ride the bus basically by myself at around ten years old, the city bus into Denver, Colorado. I would like that sort of bus system here where we can take these buses long distances, where they're near our homes, where we feel comfortable like letting our children walk to these buses and take them somewhere else. I would also like to say that as a property tax paying citizen of Norman, I don't think it's something that you can just identify as without living the Norman life, but I understand that this is a public commentary space and that people have a right to that comment. But we should really consider who our elected officials serve, and they serve the people of Norman. Thank you.
Answer a few questions. Okay. Just wanted to note a few things. The Lindsay Street project, there'll be an update and discussion about that at the next Community Planning and Transportation Committee in November. Discussion about that bond project from Pickard to Elm Street and what that might look like and what council expectations are for that project as not a widening project and is being focused on sensitivity to the trees and existing houses that line Lindsay Street. But we will have the discussion just so that there's clarity and everybody is on the same page about that project before it gets going. We are continuing to have discussions about senior center bus stop and transit options to the senior center. It may not be a fixed route bus, but Embark Well has a program that we're looking at. Traffic Control Management Center goes online in February. A gentleman asked about the traffic lights. In February, the voter approved Traffic Control Management Center is scheduled to go online in February, so we'll hopefully see how that works once it gets going. Now that we have a full council, I think we're prepared to have the discussion about the County Economic Development Coalition. I didn't feel like it was the proper thing to enter into that agreement when we did not have a full council, but now that we do, we can have a discussion about that since not everybody was at the retreat, and then council, we can decide if we want to move forward with that or not. And then I believe there was a bus stop re-added to 12th and Triad Village Drive that might be not, might be as close as one of the ones that was removed. So, but anyway, those are some of the things I just wanted to clarify from some of the comments that we heard. Any final comment from council about anything? Okay. Thank you all for being here. This meeting is adjourned.